Okay, it is 6:02 PM on January 21st of 2020. I'd like to call this meeting to order if the city clerk could please take the roll.
Councilmember Cormac.
Here.
Vice Mayor DeBois.
Here.
Councilmember Philseth.
Here.
Mayor Fine.
Here.
Councilmember Nuss.
Here.
Councilmember Koo.
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka. Seven present.
Thank you very much. Our first order is a presentation and review of the utilities wildfire mitigation plan. Would staff please kick it off? And I assume you have a presentation?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Let me hand it off to our utilities team and consultant as statutorily required for this presentation.
So, good evening, Mayor Fine, council members. Dean Basler, utility director. So tonight, we would like to make a presentation on this mitigation plan that was mandated by the state for in 2019. It's a new law that mandated electric public-owned utilities prepare a wild mitigation plan. And the plan and the law require that the wildfire mitigation plan incorporates specific information and procedures for the electric utilities. So tonight, we're going to make a presentation. We also have our consultant with us. And then we also have Chief Blacksher from the fire department that we worked with. So if there's questions that come up, there's enough staff folks here that we hopefully will be able to answer your questions. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our acting utilities' assistant director of engineering, Debbie Lloyd.
There we go. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. So presenting tonight, there's myself, Debbie Lloyd, acting AD for engineering, utilities, electric, utilities engineering. Tom Ting, who is our electric engineering manager. And we have our consultant here who did the evaluation of our plan, and that's Andrew Dressel, Andy Dressel, with Navigant Consulting. So, as Dean said, we're here to present to you our utilities wildfire mitigation plan. First, I wanted to just kind of like do a recap about why we are here because many of you may remember, if you were on the council a couple of years ago, that we did come to you not so long ago in August 2018. We already presented some wildfire mitigation strategies that we were proposing. And at that time, the council made a determination that we do actually have an area of, I'll read it out, significant risk of catastrophic wildfire resulting from electric lines. So this was something that had been, been worked on since 2012, when the California Public Utilities Commission had initiated an update to the state's wildfire map. I think as we're all aware, the pattern of wildfires has changed in California. And way back in 2012, there was a recognition that the, the state map, the identification of high-risk areas needed to be updated. So we went through that process. We participated in that process, and we did identify that we have an area in Palo Alto that was determined to be high-risk, and council made that finding. We also came with new mitigation measures and studies that we were going to do to reduce the risk. And these are in line with updates that the Public Utilities Commission has made to its general order 95, just with more stringent construction, inspection, and maintenance requirements. So that's where we were in 2018. Very quickly afterwards, new legislation was passed, and I think I can, I can promise that there will be more coming in the next year or two, as the legislature is taking this very, very seriously. So Senate Bill 901 actually required us to, required all utilities, not just those that had identified a high risk, for all utilities to prepare a wildfire mitigation plan and update it annually. And this plan had specific components that the, the state wants to see. We are required to update it. We are required to present it to you as a governing body in a public meeting. And we were required to have it reviewed for completeness and seem that it abides by the requirements of the legis, of the regulation. So that's why we're here again, talking about the wildfires. As I mentioned, there are specific elements. I'm not going to read through this list, but a few things I just want to highlight. Obviously, this plan lays out its objectives. We identify the personnel, who are, and what their responsibilities are. And we have to come up with metrics to understand how the mitigation measures that we put in place are working, if they've been effective or not. There are a couple of operational elements that I don't think anyone may have known of a few years ago, but unfortunately, now they do. The use of the automatic reclosers and de-energization, also known as public safety power shut-offs. And probably sad to say, it's one of those few times in my career where I've been, you know, out with general public, and people are talking to me, and they understand an acronym that I use, P S P S. I think it's kind of been widely understood and known in the past year. So with those two measures, we also have to look about, one of the things our plan needs to do is look at the impact that those will have on our operations and on our customers. For example, if we do away with the automatic reclosing, it means that we have to have personnel out, personnel out in the field to check when something's been tripped. So we're going to have longer outages. The P S P S obviously means that we have customers who are going to be out of power. So we also have to take into account those sort of things, you know, water pumps, communications, how are, how are these operational measures taken to reduce the risk of a wildfire, you know, what other side of impacts might things have? And so again, just stepping back again, the, we're all very much aware that the occurrence of wildfires in California has changed patterns over the few years. There are, there are a number of risk factors. Many of them are not in our operational control. It's weather patterns, droughts, the occurrence of the high winds during the dry periods of the year, terrain, and just like the vegetation types that we, type and density. The things that we do have under control, and this is what we're, we are addressing in the, in the plan, is, you know, starting from construction, construction practices. How can we make hardened our system so it's less likely to, for a pole to come down, or a wire to come down, or equipment to malfunction and spark and cause a fire, to how we operate the system, and inspection, and maintenance. And then the other part of it, of course, is the vegetation And with that, I will pass over to Tom Ting.
Good evening. Excuse me. Obviously, some of the objectives of this plan is to minimize the risk of wildfires due to the electric utility lines, overhead electric utility lines. This was all prepared in collaboration with other city departments, fire, urban forestry, office of emergency services, parks, as we went through this to see what their requirements are. We want to specify that they, parks and urban forestry and, or office of emergency services already have their own foothill fire management plan. They've had that developed for several years. This is strictly looking at utilities, facilities, and overhead facilities. So in terms of items that we've already completed, as was mentioned, we've gone through the development of the CPUC map and identified the higher fire threat areas. We've already increased inspection frequency and correction of any infractions that we find. We also are looking at implementing some more stringent maintenance requirements. We've identified some locations where we need to go out and make some repairs, so we're scheduling that as we can. Our electric system operations, as was mentioned, we've disabled our reclosing capabilities. We no longer have that function enabled, so we've already implemented that. In terms of some of the activities in progress, as was mentioned, the P S P S procedures, we've already worked up a draft, and we actually had that ready for this past October in 2019. If we, if it was necessary for the city to implement, we were ready to go forward with de-energizing services in the foothills. We've already installed a new weather station. In the past, we've relied on information from the National Weather Service and weather stations that PG has in, in the area. We've installed our own weather station up on the Montebello Ridge at the reservoir up there. We're looking at fiber optic cable extension to improve communications up in the foothills. We're working with Office of Emergency Services. It's something they would like to have installed. We're working on trying to get that installed. Just to highlight a few. Some of the activities we plan to do, we're already drafting a scope of work to look at rebuilding the overhead line in the foothills area. That could either be rebuilding as in place with more hardened facilities. That could be different types of poles, not necessarily a wood pole, but steel poles. We're looking, also looking at possibly undergrounding facilities where we can. So we worked up a scope of work. We've met, I've met with our operations team to identify, okay, get their feeling for what's up there. We'll be presenting, breaking up the scope and presenting some ideas to council at a later date to see how we want to proceed. Along with that goes with some additional enhanced construction practices. How we build our overhead lines. Like I said, we want to underground where we can, also looking at relocating lines away from vegetation, closer to roads, so where it's easier to maintain and inspect, things like that. So we're also working with the fire department, or we've spoken with the fire department about controlled burns up there. They've proposed the idea. We've said we'd be supportive of that, depending on, no matter what, how they ever they want to proceed with that, let us know. So. So some of the metrics that we would want, obviously, is we would not want any electric line caused outages, or outages in the foothills. Outages are what can cause, possibly cause wildfires. If there is one, ideally, that would be the scope, but if there is one, we want to just minimize the impact of any kind of fires up there. With that, I want to turn this over to our independent evaluator, Andy Dressel with Navigant.
Good evening, and thank you, City Council, for allowing me to be presenting here tonight. I'm going to have a presentation up here in a minute. And some of it's going to show some of the same things that both Deborah and Tom have already discussed about the, the legislative history, as well as some of the actions that Palo Alto has taken in response to the directives from SB 901, which became Public Utilities Code 8387. So, as discussed earlier, this largely came out of SB 901, passed in 2018, in response to the catastrophic wildfires that occurred in, in 2017, and of course, in 2018. This was somewhat modified by AB 1054, which requires that the plan be submitted prior to July 1st of this year to the wildfire safety advisory board. One of the provisions, and Deborah had the slide up earlier that showed the various individual requirements that need to be included in the plan, but one of the additional provisions is that there must be an independent evaluator. And it says, "The local publicly-owned utility shall contract with a qualified independent evaluator," and that green does not show up well for me in my eyesight. My, my apologies. "Experienced in assessing the safety and," oh, thank you, Tom. I apologize for that. Should have had the. "Experienced in assessing the safe operational electrical infrastructure to review and assess the comprehensiveness of the wildfire mitigation plan," and that we would issue a report, and that that report would be made publicly available on the website. So, we, we did provide that report. We reviewed Palo Alto's wildfire mitigation plan, and we did find it to be comprehensive. It addressed, we looked at it to make that determination, we looked at it both from a quantitative standpoint, where all the pieces addressed, and also a qualitative standpoint, and was Palo Alto meeting the intent of the legislation? Were they meeting the goals of SB 901? And we believe that they are. To do that, we reviewed not only the plan, but we also issued data requests, and we reviewed the supporting documentation, including the foothills fire management plan. We reviewed the vegetation management practices, inspection practices, the planned efforts that are, that Palo Alto Utilities is undertaking going forward, and that all led to our finding of comprehensiveness. And again, this is kind of the summation that, of what I just went through, the approach and, and the result. But as I was just talking with some of the Palo Alto Utilities employees, they really got a head start on this, you know, with some of the activities that Deborah was describing back in 2011, 2012. Palo Alto Utilities actually was the territory lead in the CPUC's effort to define the tiered high-fire-threat districts. There's the tier one, which is the low area, which is most of your territory. And then tier two, which is the elevated, which is where the foothills line runs. And then there's three, tier three, which is the extreme area, which your utility does not go through. So it's been very proactive in, in putting forward the vegetation management and inspection best practices. It was mentioned that the risk reclosing relays are permanently disabled in the foothills area. Before, if there is an outage in there, that area before they can be re-energized, there will be a patrol to make sure there's no hazards on the line which could catch fire. And, and there's a use of non-expulsive fuses in that area, which don't expel any hot gases or metals. So those are just some examples of the efforts undertaken, many of which have already been going on for some time. So with that, again, our finding is that the plan has met the comprehensiveness standard sought by the Public Utilities Code. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks to staff and Navigant for the presentation. Obviously, the past few years, we've seen significant wildfire activity and great loss of life and properties. This is an important exercise. And I just want to give a shout out to our fire department for participating in the state's responses over the past few years. As City Manager mentioned, this is roughly a procedural requirement under Senate Bill 901, where electric utilities have to prepare and update an annual plan for wildfire hazard mitigation. So do we have any public speakers? None? Open it up to council for comments or questions. Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Fine. Thanks to the staff. I just want to review that the UAC didn't have any particular comments. There were no changes or anything they suggested based on the attachment?
Correct.
Okay. And then, Mr. Dressel, I understand that you found this to be comprehensive. Were there any areas where we are not yet working on best practices?
We did make some recommendations along the way, some of which were already incorporated into the plan. So they were making changes as we went along. There's, going forward, there's still additional recommendations in there, such as working more closely with the Emergency Operations Center. As Tom mentioned, you're looking at rebuilding the overhead line, making sure that that considers non-wood alternatives or more fire-resistant pole structures. And, and that is going to be part of that, that project going forward, and also the, what's called tree wire, which is insulated wire instead of bare wire. So that is also going to be a, a part of that. Also, we had recommended that you perform a more comprehensive risk assessment. There was the 2011 Hazard Assessment Plan or Analysis, and so there's a, going to be one by the summer. So those are some of the recommendations that we made.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing that with us. And then, just the, the last area I'd like to touch on, perhaps Ms. Lloyd, is around the public safety power shut-off. I mean, I think we all heard a lot of horror stories about other utilities and how they did or did not implement that. The plan that we had in the packet seemed, there's like a short description. Is there anything you care to elaborate on in terms of, you know, how in the event we had to do this, we would communicate with people, we would prioritize? Just want to be sure we're learning from how things have gone for others.
Obviously, it's a learning experience for all of us. It's the first time. We went through the process. We developed the, the process that we've developed, outlined all the communications, all the communications from, the first communications with customers to let them know that there may be a possibility, communications when it's inevitable that we're going to do this in, you know, approximate times, things like that. So we've tried to outline how we're going to communicate, and then how, from an operational standpoint, how we would actually implement it. So I think the procedure that we inserted in this was just a process and procedures, but not the actual detailed steps that we would do, use to implement it.
Well, hopefully, you'll be working with the IT department as well to make sure the server doesn't go down when everyone, like, gets on to try to check on their address. Thank you so much.
Any other comments or lights? Councilmember Koo.
Thank you for bringing this forward. I have a few questions here. So, you mentioned SB 901, and then there's the AB 1054. What did that add to SB 901?
The AB 1054 added the creation of a wildfire safety advisory board. So there's a separate process for the investor-owned utilities and the publicly-owned utilities. The investor-owned utilities had to get their first plan together by, largely in 2019, I think theirs was due, or largely in 2018, theirs was first due in, in 2019. They actually submit theirs for approval with the CPUC, with the California Public Utilities Commission. Obviously, because publicly-owned utilities don't fall under the jurisdiction of the California Public Utilities Commission, they're, they wanted to have a advisory body that would bring forward best practices and, you know, evaluate the publicly-owned utilities plan. So I created the wildfire safety advisory board, and also created the requirement that you submit to them by July 1st, 2020.
And where, where does our body sit? Is it with utilities or OES?
So the, the creation of, it's a statewide advisory body?
I see. Okay.
Yeah, they're, they're under the, it's a, they're working closely with the Public Utilities Commission, and I, I, I'm not absolutely sure what their relationship is, but I believe they do answer in some way to the Public Utilities Commission.
I see. Thank you. Now, on packet page 11, there is minimizing source of ignition. It says in there that there's increased inspection and maintenance. Is that a coordinated effort between the CPUC, CPUC and Utilities Fire Department, or is it simply CPUC?
It's actually just utilities.
Oh, it's utilities?
Yes.
Okay. How often do you guys go out to inspect them?
Right now, we're performing inspections every year, annually.
Once a year?
Yes. Typically, for most areas not in high-fire areas, it could be every three years that we actually go out there and look at it. For the high-fire threat areas, we're going out annually.
And this is in the hills?
Yes. Everything, it's basically the higher fire threat area for Palo Alto is everything west of Highway 280.
And, Tom, you also have, as a, as a goal, to have that all done prior to the start of the fire year each year, correct?
Correct.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
The, the plan is to have all of that inspection done for the high-fire threat area prior to the start of fire season every year.
Which is?
The, the start of June.
June. Thank you. On, there is also, I noticed you guys have in here the roles and responsibilities. And are those implemented already? Or when are they coming about?
The roles, they're already implemented.
They're already implemented. So you mentioned the Montebello site, but how does Fire Station Eight factor into this? Are they still on the rotation seasonal-based when it is manned during the high-fire season time, or not?
Yeah. I, I don't have an answer for that one.
Do you have a question about staff?
About Fire Station Eight? Does it open during the summertime or the high-fire season timing?
Good evening, Councilman Gio Blacksher from the fire department. Fire Station Eight is usually staffed on red flag days. So whenever we get the warning from the Santa Clara Fire Unit or any other, any other regions that releases fire danger, we staff that with, depending on the level, and with a minimum three person, or minimum two person, but up to five. But it's only on the high-fire danger. But it's only on the high fire danger days for the period of the red flag.
And it's mostly just to keep an eye for fires and so forth?
Correct. It's, we generally patrol the area. We work with other staff, both our auto aid agencies and Los Altos, which is Santa Clara County Fire. We also coordinate with foothills park rangers and just talk about, you know, how many people are in the park, are there any events going on, you know, getting used to the roads and the area up there.
So remind me, how many firefighters slash paramedics do we have now?
Totally staffed would be eighty, we had one, eighty-six.
And in case there's an emergency and a fire, you'd be working, how many would be available to get started? And you'd have mutual aid from?
That is correct. We had, we would get mutual aid from the county primarily, and depending on how large-scale the incident is, we would get state resources also.
And how many on duty at a given time?
On duty just for Palo Alto?
Uh-huh.
Because, goodness.
Around?
Yeah, I'll get it. And, but all the resources in the city wouldn't respond to the foothills because we would still be responsible for responding to emergencies in the flatlands as well.
I think you spoke a little bit about communications. How would you notify all the residents up in the hills that, for evacuation? I mean, what is the process that you would do that besides alert SEC and the other one, which is, the other notification, EAS?
Correct. Well, there's primarily SEC alert. We use Nextdoor as well. We collaborate with PD and OES through it. They use, PD uses Nixle. We use Nextdoor as well as PD, social media and alert SEC.
So this is all, is there a backup? I mean, this is all using social media and dependent on internet and so forth?
Correct.
I mean, what other means would there be? Any kind of alarm system? Or, but, I don't know.
So you're referring to something like an air raid type alarm that's manual, that would need to rely on social media or connectivity as an alarm? Currently, we do not have any way to notify residents from a manual audible alarm. Primarily, it's through the resources that I just mentioned.
Okay. Is that any, is that at all part of a plan in order to have a backup system in case our internet goes down and there's no way to reach others? Everybody?
Yeah, there's conversations in the county of agencies trying to find solutions that eliminate the reliability on those type of resources, social media and connectivity. And so those conversations are going, but we don't have a solution right now. But they are happening.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Then there was a, there was some mention about urban forestry. Is that within our own department or is it within the CPUC?
No, that's the city department.
That's the city?
Yeah.
How big is our urban department?
Part, huh?
Urban forestry. How many people is in, how many staff members in there?
That I don't know. It's within the Public Works Department.
All right.
Division within Public Works.
And so they get consulted to go out and, to inspect the trees and foliage and what to cut and what not to cut?
They have their own urban forestry staffing, and then they use contracts, outside contractors to do the actual trimming. So they would identify areas that need to be tree trimmed, and then they'd have a contractor to go out there and do it.
Could you, City Manager, could you let me know how many, let us know how many staff members you have in urban forestry? I think one of my last questions would be the PG&E's wildfire mitigation plan. Is that something that has been coordinated with the fire department so that they're aware of what their mitigation plan is? Or maybe you guys in the utilities?
Sorry, PG&Es?
Yeah, it says here on packet page 10, second to the last paragraph, that all the jurisdictions are included in PG&E's wildfire mitigation plan. I just want to make sure that we are aware of it, and if theirs fail, what is our backup plan?
Not sure on the question here, but, so we, PG&E has communications avenues with cities, actually with the Office of Emergency Services throughout the area. And last year, towards the, well, I think it was actually at the end of the fire season, or towards the end, we, we met with representatives from PG&E and started talking about having a line of communications at a utility level as well. So most of the, most of what PG&E is dealing with is cities, other areas, that are, it's a little bit different when the city has its own utility, because there's different information that we need from them versus what they were putting out. I mean, I don't know if you know of people who are in PG&E territory. I was actually in an area in Fremont that, close to the foothills, where we were, I was getting alerts that we may be shut off, and we won't, we're delaying it, we may. So they have their communication with customers. But we need communication as a utility to utility. So we're working on that before the next fire season. Hopefully, that pans out. In terms of they fail, you mean fail in communications or, or actually cause a fire?
Mm-hmm.
Both.
Both.
So, I mean, in terms of communications, we're, you know, we're monitoring situations ourselves. You know, we, we have those, we're looking, we're obviously looking at what PG&E is thinking is going to happen. That's why we want to know what they're thinking. But we, we will, we will make our own decisions on whether we need to de-energize in the foothills or what actions we need to take. One of the, I guess, one of the complications here is apparently we have a little bit of, up in the foothills, right on the borders, we have a few Palo Alto residents who are actually in, served by PG&E and vice versa. We may have some non-residents that we serve, and it's just because of, you know, the configuration of the distribution system up there about where it made sense to be serving people from. So we certainly want to have communications, giving the same communication, because we're putting things out at a citywide level to all of our residents. And so we might be telling, you know, those few people up in the foothills, no, we're not going to shut off your power. And then they get shut off from PG&E. So we want to avoid that situation.
And I understand during the shut-offs last year, there was, PG&E had a website. Is that the only way that we can keep up to date about shut-offs? Or is there another site?
There's, there's other communication lines, you know, that are not open to the public.
Oh, it's not open to a public?
There is that one that's open to the public. What I'm saying is that there are other communication lines that PG&E has. Again, we're trying to make sure we've got it in place at a utility level. But they're also pushing that information to the, the-
Public Safety-
Public Safety Agencies. Thank you.
Thank you. On, you know, there is a lot of evaluation, right? How do you ensure that the plan that is being implemented will work? I mean, is there exercises or drills or, you know, just to find out when a notification goes out, response or evacuation? How do you test it to make sure that the plan, the emergency operations plan will work out?
So the evacuation plans, I mean, we have, you know, we have Ken Dooker's group here in Palo Alto, so.
Because coming out of the hills.
But, I mean, we have, you know, we have emergency, they do do drills about getting information.
From the hills?
It's a little kind of beyond what we had, what we're talking about. In our plan, we're kind of concentrating on what do we do as a utility to ensure that we don't actually have a fire starting up there.
And I do think that that's a distinction worth noting here, that this plan in particular focuses on minimizing the potential to ignite, as well as to address the utility side issues should any occurrence happen. But it, again, is, is part of a larger system, both with Office of Emergency Services, Fire Department, should a response be necessary, as well as related to the earlier discussion on how it nests with other plans that other agencies put together, including PG&E.
All right. I mean, it's a comprehensive plan, so I wanted to make sure that, you know, we're also evaluating and looking into, you know, communications and notification, as well as if evacuation becomes necessary, then that is something to be evaluated about, I mean, to be made known to everybody, especially coming down from the hills when the roads are very narrow. So how, how do we ensure that everybody gets out in time? So, but thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Phil Seth.
Thank you. Sort of question here primarily for staff. So if I understand what, what you folks said, the main risk area is up in the hills. And that's an area where, you know, there's sort of lots of other adjacent jurisdictions up here that aren't covered by CPAU, right? If I understand this correctly, the focus of the wildfire mitigation plan is really on, has really been on CPAU and compliance with the state, state bill. Essentially, it's to make sure that our utilities doesn't start any fires, right? And that's sort of the, the primary focus. Is there any assessment of sort of broader than that, if you live up in the hills, other kinds of risks? Because I noticed when you started talking about stuff like controlled burns and so forth, it seems like you're sort of getting a little bit, a little bit broader than that. Or was it really, I mean, is there, is there any way to tell or to assess, you know, how much risk I'm at if I'm living up, up there before and after, not just with CPAU? Or is it really focused on CPAU?
So our plan is focused on Palo Alto Utilities-
Okay.
-in terms of, at least, again, in terms of the mitigation efforts, what we can do to harden the system and reduce the risk of our, any of our equipment causing a fire. However, because we are a city-owned utility, we are already very closely coordinated with the Office of Emergency Services and Fire and Urban Forestry. So we have a very, you know, we started off with a very coordinated approach to that. I will say that, you know, aside from this plan, as a utility, we also participate in statewide procedures at the, at the Public Utilities Commission, at the Energy Commission. So we certainly try and stay engaged, involved in statewide efforts.
I understand. Okay. And then, so then my, my, my question, I guess, is, do the agencies that serve the adjacent jurisdictions, so Los Altos, hills and whatnot, do they have similar mitigation plans that we know of? Or are we sort of doing it, but, you know, that there's a danger that 100 feet away, somebody else isn't and so forth?
I'll, I'll start off, but maybe Andy can jump in. But, um, yes, this is a requirement for all utilities.
So this is now the sixth public utility independent evaluation that Navigant has performed. And so most of the public utilities do have integrated services. Some of them do not. They're, they're public utility districts as well. But what we see is most of the communities have a fire plan. And then now, through SB 901 and the Public Utilities Code changes, the, the utilities have a utility-specific plan. And, you know, then there's larger state plans that, you know, CalFire is organizing. But, you know, so there are, there are different, you know, coordinations going on across the landscape. And that's true with the emergency response communication systems as well. You know, I, I don't know your area well enough to know how these tie together, but there are a whole host of efforts going on, you know, especially with the increasing fires and the, you know, the, the degree to which the fires have been affecting communities over the last several years.
Well, it makes sense. So then, then if I understand the process here, CPO determined that they had some risk exposure to, to starting fires in the foothills, developed a mitigation plan, and then you folks basically validated the plan?
That's correct.
Okay.
And as I noted before, that's one of the requirements of the plan, that you have an independent evaluator.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So I'm going to go to Councilmember Niss next. I just want to, we have 15 minutes left for this item, and we have a pretty packed schedule, so if we can keep it on time, it would be appreciated. Councilmember Niss.
I think most of the questions have been asked. Let me just do a couple of more general comments on this. If we look at Australia and say, what have we learned from what's happening in Australia? What would you say to that? It's okay. Did you want to say something?
I mean, I think one of the questions is how do we know if what we're doing will be effective? And a lot of that is looking at best practices, what is happening in, with other utilities. So, you know, when we're looking at the new construction methods, or we're understanding the need for vegetation clearance, you know, a lot, a lot of this has been learned from industry and, you know, what's best practice from other utilities in the industry.
So maybe I'm putting words in your mouth, but not a whole lot learned from Australia, you would say? It's really more about what we've learned here and, and putting it into practice?
Um, I mean, yeah, I don't, I don't know how we would, how we could take those lessons here. It's a very different terrain.
But I know that firefighters from the US went there.
Yes. And I'm sure there's terms of fighting fire, there's the lessons learned. Again, we're-
At least everyone is speaking the same language.
Yes.
I mean, I, I mean that in truth, because it would have been incredible to try and communicate if you weren't speaking the same language, especially given what apparently they were, they were trying to transmit to each other. Must have been incredible. So the only other thing I would say, and I think Lydia sort of hit on it as well, is would we follow the practices that PG&E did and recently, and where they received, I think, kudos for some of what they did. But certainly, we heard a lot about the damage that was done because they hadn't truly been pinpointing the, the issues carefully enough. It's, 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 it's a dreadful thing to deal with. We've had lots of friends who've been in the Napa and Sonoma area, and that's, it's dreadful. And you, you don't know when you finally are safe again, or will the fire turn around one more time? So no matter, no matter what we do, it does seem as though we haven't really tackled it completely yet. These are good practices, but maybe we haven't found the magic bullet yet.
We, we definitely were learning along the way from some of the communication mistakes that PG&E had, so tried to correct that as we were communicating. But, yeah, this is not, this is not a circumstance or an industry where you want to learn everything from firsthand experience, learning from what others are doing right as well as what they're doing wrong. It's pretty fundamental.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. I just have one quick question. If anybody else would like to make a comment, please hit your lights. If anybody else would like to make a comment, please hit your lights. Was there any examination, or do we examine any potentiality in which the city would reduce service levels to certain areas in the foothills or in the fire zones, or perhaps prohibit new development there? Do we consider that?
No, that wasn't taken into consideration.
Okay.
Yes, I'd actually jump in and say, I think the, I think the fact that we will, we are not just considering, we are prepared to implement PSPS is a reduction in service to folk who live in the foothills, and understanding that that's something that could happen during fire season.
Sure, I guess, I guess it's a temporal reduction in service, but I'm wondering, you know, are there certain areas where we would say it may be harder in the future for the city to provide services here because of the increased wildfire danger, but I see the director shaking his head. Okay. Anyone else? Nope? Okay. Thank you all very much. The report is appreciated. Any last comments, Mr. City Manager or Staff?
Sure. So I just wanted to clarify, back with Councilmember Coos' question about the urban forestry and your question about how many staff we had. So, and I know that kind of threw us, we weren't thinking about numbers of staff. The impact to this plan is coordination that we have with them. So it's, it's never been a question of, is there enough staff to complete the clearing and vegetation management? That's not an issue. We're coordinating with them, they're, they'll be up there, and they will contract, they have contractors to do and comply with our vegetation management requirements.
All right. Thank you very much. I think that concludes item one, and with that, we'll move on to oral communications, where any member of the public may speak to any item not on the agenda. If you would like to address the council, please get your cards into the city clerk up front. We'll stop taking cards. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 10, 7:15, we'll stop taking cards. And Councilmember Niss, if you would do me the favor of run the clock. Our first speaker is Cheryl Klein, to be followed by Karen Pauls.
Three for everyone.
Welcome.
Hi. Hi. Mayor Fine and council members, I wanted to thank you again, Mayor Chikada and Planning Director Leit for your incredible, incredible support of Wilton Court. You wanted to make it happen, and together we are. We are so grateful that the city understands the importance of affordable housing, and that you, the council, are pursuing many strategies to create more homes for those who need them. Last week's discussion of ADUs and safe parking lots showed some of the strategies you're thinking about using. As you discuss the housing plan tonight, I hope you will continue to use whatever tools you have to speed up the production of more housing. Let's sink beyond 50 feet in height, let's streamline the approval process, which will save money and time. On behalf of Palo Alto Housing and our more than 2,000 residents, thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karen Pauls, to be followed by Melanie Grundell. Welcome.
Good evening. I am Karen Pauls, and I am working with Annette Glankoff to lead and manage our Emergency Services Volunteer Program. So tonight, I wanted to highlight an event that is of general interest to the public, and that is on February 6, which is a Thursday evening, at Mitchell Park, the Office of Emergency Services and the Citizens Corps Council is hosting the Community Partnership Awards. And we are also having a keynote speaker, and that will be the Deputy Director of the Santa Clara County OES, that's David Flam, and the topic is Lights Out: What Happens When the Power Goes Out? So, we're going to be covering a variety of questions there and answers, and I think it's a fun event, and I encourage all the council members who are able to attend to come and show your support for our emergency volunteers in the city. So the Community Partnership Awards are given out to outstanding emergency service volunteers for this year, as well as organizations in our community that have worked to improve the safety in our city and our readiness for emergency situations. So, February 6 at Mitchell Park in the evening, and I hope to see a lot of you there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Melanie Grundell, to be followed by Susan Cole. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Fine and council members. My name is Melanie Grundell. I live in College Terrace on Yale Street. I would like to read from my recent letter to the council to bring some important, important benefits of our community to your attention. Mayor Fine and fellow council members, I am writing to you to bring to your attention the importance to our neighborhood of having a market at the College Terrace Center at Al Camino, Real, Oxford and College. I am asking for your attention to all, to all of the requirements and regulations that apply. Without a functioning market, the property is in violation of its planned community zoning. After years of absence, I moved back to College Terrace, to Yale Street. Having the market nearby for daily needs was an important consideration for me. I generally walk with a cane. I do expend considerable time in my front garden. Daily, I see large numbers of young families with strollers and parkers pass by. This steady foot and bike traffic keeps me keenly aware of the large number of young families in our neighborhood. Older residents like me, young families with strollers, parkers, and busy residents like most of us are well-served by the nearby market to shop for daily needs. After a short hiatus without a grocery store on the corner, the Corey Market managed a soft opening at the request of the landlord, who promised to finish the facility in short order, so a grand opening could be announced and realized. To have a market in the building that was once fondly called the JJNF Market by many was the key requirement for permission to build and develop the corner of Al Camino, Oxford and College. In line with the soft opening, the Corey's provided an adequate selection of products. Due to their quick response and special request, many items were available at request of the neighborhood. A grand opening would have allowed for a more extensive selection of products. Unfortunately, for that to happen, the landlord would have to finish the doors, and I paraphrase the rest of my letters, paraphrase the doors, signs would have to go up. In June, shrouding and scaffolding appeared, hiding the market from view. I had to pick my way through cherry pickers and building equipment to get to the market. I shop there twice a week, and I urge the market, I urge you to do everything in your power to enforce the requirements and regulations, so the market can function properly, as is required. That way, the market can be the benefit to the neighborhood that it is supposed to be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Susan Cole, to be followed by Mike Forrester. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Serendipitously, I'm actually speaking on the same topic as Melanie. I live in, excuse me, in Evergreen Park, not in College Terrace, so I'd like to let the council know that this is also a matter of concern for some of us in Evergreen Park. The main thrust of my comment is to let you know that the community at large is concerned about this issue. I think Melanie brought up a lot of the important problems that have, obstacles that have been placed in front of the market, but, let me pull this down a little bit. I'd like to urge you to implement the fines that were originally, originally agreed upon between the builder and the, and the city for the $2,000 a day that were found due to a city error not to be implementable. And I'd like to urge you to have the city attorney do everything she can to ensure that those, that if the market does close, that those fines are fully implemented. I hope that the Corey family can continue to remain in place if they wish to. From talking to Chris Corey, I've understood that there's, he's been unable to communicate with the management's attorney, that he's simply not getting responses, and I would urge the city to put its resources behind the Corey family and ensure that they get a fair chance to, to be allowed to continue in that location. I also urge you not to allow the management to suggest that a market cannot thrive in that location, because, as Melanie pointed out, conditions have simply not been provided. College Terrace community member who could not be here today was Anne LaFargue-Balin, who's very concerned about this issue. She's ill tonight. She asked me to point out to you that she spoke to the Chief Building Inspector, George Hoyt, on November 26, 2019, and he told her that he had given management 60 days to complete the work that's currently shrouding the market and making it appear closed. She says, according to her calculations, that would be tomorrow, would be the 60 days, yet the shrouding is still there, and of course, Corey's is, I believe, on the verge of closing. She says, kindly remind all pertinent parties in the city, including Molly Stump and Jonathan Leit, that the deadline must be enforced. And I would, I also agree with her, and urging you to enforce the deadline and to give the, the market the kind of support, give the location the support it needs, so that the community really has the market that the city contracted for when they permitted this building. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Forrester, to be followed by Rita Varell. Welcome.
Mayor and City Council, thanks for listening to all of this. I'm also speaking about Corey's Market. Actually, Susan Cole is my wife. We live in Evergreen Park. We frequented JJNF when it was there, the first market, College Terrace Center, and Corey's, frequent customers, and were very sad to see Corey's going. Much of what I was going to say has already been covered. I would like to remind the council that the owners have not made a good faith effort to make sure there's a grocery store there. By allowing a situation to develop with the shrouding and not completing things in a timely manner, they allowed the creation of a situation which was not viable for that grocery store or any other retail in that building. And they should not be let off the hook. They shouldn't be able to come to the council and say, well, we tried two grocery stores and they didn't work. Well, at least for Corey's, it didn't work because they, it didn't look like a retail space, and the grocery store could not survive. So I second the, the suggestions that the fines be continued, increased to the 2,000 if possible, and anything the City Council can do beyond fines to cause a market to be successful in that location would be very desirable. Thank you.
Thank you. Rita Varell, to be followed by Pete Mareska.
Good evening. So this is difficult, because I want to be respectful of you, Mayor Fine, and of your position, but I was really pretty appalled when I read the letter that you had sent out. One, the letterhead was phony, and so somebody went to the effort of making a letterhead that seemed to represent the city of Palo Alto, the Office of the Mayor, and the City Council, when it did not. Second, your words were really fawning of Scott Weiner, and as we know, SB 50 is a very major topic in this town. In 2019, a letter was sent by Mayor Phil, then Mayor Phil Seth, with the approval of the City Council, which did not support the bill. So all of a sudden, you're in office for three weeks, and this letter goes out, which I understand it's your individual opinion, but it appeared to represent the city of Palo Alto, Mayor's Office, and the City Council. Now, looking at the paper's article today, you have an Masters in Urban Planning, you have, you said four years on the City Council, it's actually three, and you have three years on the Planning and Transportation Committee. I would think that with your education and your experience, you would know how to send a letter which represented your opinion, and not that of the office you hold or the City Council, that you are a member of one of seven. Now, again, this is very difficult, because I really don't want to come up here and scold anybody, especially someone who is now the mayor of our city. But I think if you do not know how, and this goes for everybody, if you don't know how to write a letter that represents your opinion, rather than that of the office you hold, whatever your office is, then I think you need to talk to the city manager or the city attorney and find out how to ethically represent your opinion, but no more opinion than that. And also, I didn't know whether your letter was a campaign letter or not, but please note that Mr. Fine is not interested in traffic or parking, only in housing. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just remember, remind members of the public that comments are meant to address the council as a whole, though I'm welcome to take the criticism, happy for it. Next speaker is Peter Mareska.
Good evening, I'm Peter Mareska. I'm a 30-year resident of Palo Alto. My wife and I support SB 50, and have expressed this to our state senator, state assembly member, and in a letter to this council. As a practical matter, the state's housing crisis is well-known, and local control has gotten Palo Alto, like many other cities, to where we are, building far fewer housing units to meet the need. As a personal matter, we have no objection to multi-unit housing going up on either side of us. To us, a duplex, triplex going up to replace a single-story house is no different from the city permitting a 5,000-square-foot house on either side of us. In fact, I'd rather have two smaller houses. Now, we might have to continue parking in our own driveway, but I think we could manage to do that. We welcome the economic diversity that has always been a part of our neighborhood, and without SB 50, it's not, it's not really guaranteed that we're going to be able to continue to have that economic diversity that we currently have. So we urge you to support the amended SB 50 to avoid, avoid, quote, "state imposition", unquote, and let's create an SB 50 compliant plan for Palo Alto as soon as we can. I would also like to state for the record that contrary to what many people have not been saying, none, no one in my family is in the pocket of the big developers. This is our own opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathy Jatusen, to be followed by Aram James. Let's move that to the, here she comes. Kathy Jordan. Welcome.
Sorry, maybe my handwriting was bad. To echo the lady speaker, just to speak to the council as a whole, although that's not really what I plan to talk about, but I also resent the fact that one member of our council would represent as though the city had a position when it does not. And also, I would disagree with the gentleman who spoke, and express a different viewpoint of SB 50, and that I do not think that our community would prefer to have tall towers being put up next to our single-family homes. And I think that, that many people are unhappy with the prospect of that, and unhappy with the prospect of limited parking and the additional infrastructure costs that would go along with that that are not funded. I actually came up this evening to talk about Caltrain and electrification, if I might, to repeat that the advertisement that has gone out about electrification means that we'll have more frequent train service, that is not accurate. Electrification in and of itself, as well as modernizing the signal system, does not lead to more frequent train service. It's helpful, but it's not sufficient. Limiting factor on more frequent train service is actually the expensive grade separations that are being proposed. There are 42 remaining grade separations in the Caltrain corridor, and the estimated cost of separating those grades are $8 billion. The last mile to the Salesforce Transit Center is projected to be $10 billion, and those funds are currently not available. So it is not inevitable that there will be more frequent train service in the Caltrain corridor. It is not inevitable that we need to do expensive grade separations. It is not inevitable that we need to consider closing Churchill Avenue or Palo Alto Avenue. It is not inevitable. And in fact, apparently, most cities are expected to contribute to these 42 remaining grade separation projects, which raises the question of, what if Redwood City doesn't come up with the money that's needed for grade separations, but Palo Alto does? up with the money that's needed for grade separations, but Palo Alto does? So Palo Alto will reach into its pocket while other cities may not, and as a result, got a divided city and got to pay for the privilege of it. So since it is not inevitable, I would ask, why would we necessarily want this, to have high-speed trains hurtling down a densely populated area corridor and creating additional traffic congestion while it does so? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Aram James, to be followed by Pam Mareska. Welcome.
So I'm down for SB 50. Wrote back, I wrote to the Weekly sometime back, but I wanted to couple it with a robust discussion of reparations, so hopefully we can add that to the agenda. SB 50 is really critical. We've got to have, like one of the other speakers said, housing, low-income housing and reparations. But that's not what I was here to speak about tonight. You see up there, Aram James. I submitted the handout that I may not get through with council, but it's on the issue of, I'll read the title of it, "Reexamining the Need for Tasers in Palo Alto: A Priority for Review by Our City Council in 2020." I'm requesting the council and the community to reexamine the need for tasers, particularly in light of a growing body of evidence. Since 2007, when tasers were implemented here in Palo Alto, the tasers are dangerous and far more than originally thought. I'd like to build the community conversation based on the data and facts, the taser usage and expenses here in Palo Alto, specifically what they are. I'm submitting this to Molly Stump, and I apologize, I don't know the name of the gentleman sitting in for Molly Stump tonight, but to the city attorney's office, a public records request, and I may not get through all the requests, but the number of times that tasers have been deployed since their implementation in 2007 and a breakdown of the data regarding the number of times tasers have been deployed each year from 2007 to 2019, the costs or money spent purchasing tasers on an annual basis from 2007 through 2019, the grand total and annual costs, the cost to replace tasers, the cost to repair tasers, the total amount spent on tasers annually, including specifically, that portion of the budget attributed specifically to training new officers in the use of tasers and retesting and training long-term police officers. The number and case names of the lawsuits filed against the city of Palo Alto based entirely on taser use and those based on a combination of tasers and other uses of force, the number, the case names of those suits, all the information regarding money's paid, and I see I'm running out of time, but you've got the totality of that. I will be building this taser discussion over the next few months as I get the data. We can have a fact-based conversation. Thanks much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Pam Mareska. Welcome.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Pam Mareska, and I've spoken on several occasions in support of the new housing Wilton Court, which is going up on El Camino. I am here tonight to say thank you to the city council for approving the additional $10 million loan to Palo Alto Housing. So on behalf of the 21 people with intellectual or developmental disabilities, who we hope will eventually have a home in Wilton Court, thank you so much for your support, guys. Peace.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kristin Anderson, to be followed by Herb Borack. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Kristin Anderson. I'm here to talk about the College Terrace Center. Is that another part of the agenda? I just...
It's not agendized tonight.
It's not agendized.
I do want to, after this, I would like to ask the city manager a quick question on it.
Okay.
Please continue.
I urge you to enforce the $2,000-a-day fine that was part of the original negotiations for the College Terrace Center. The owner, Jason Oberman, knew the terms when he bought it. It is unethical for Mr. Oberman to continue to stonewall and purposely drive the market out of business. It is equally unethical for the city council to let him get away with it. With the proper support, a local market could certainly survive. Please enforce these fines to motivate Mr. Oberman to do the right thing and welcome a neighborhood market at the College Terrace Center. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker will be Herb Borack.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Fine and council members. The College Terrace Center market was required as part of the approval of that office project, the College Terrace Center. Saying something as a grocery store does not mean just writing the word grocery on a piece of paper, attaching it to the building, and selling some food products. Grocery stores need inspection and approval from the county Department of Environmental Health. I searched their site for a permit for a market at that site, and I couldn't find one. So if there's not been a legally operated market at any time, then every day should be assessed for a fine, rather than just the days that the staff has said are limited to fines. So in staff's pursuit of information on this project, they should look for, and if they find, provide in the public record a copy of the permit from the county that says there was a market there. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes our oral communications. I'd just like to ask the city manager quickly, a number of folks about the college terrace market, should and when should the city and community expect an update on that?
We've got, I think, a couple of council discussions upcoming, one of which will be an amendment to municipal code, the fine fee schedule, I believe on February 10. So that'll be the first or the next public discussion, I think that is on point here.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Let's move on to the action calendar for tonight. Our first item is item number two, connecting Palo Alto rail grade separations. Tonight, we'll receive an update from the Expanded Community Advisory Panel and potential modification of the list of grade separation alternatives, adding up to three concepts, and then also providing staff directions on next steps for the consultant contract amendment for scope, budget, and schedule. City manager and staff, if you want to kick this off.
Sure. Let me just lead it in, in that there may be some intentional and maybe obvious awkwardness in how we choreograph seating and speaking and whatnot. I think just to acknowledge that, as council directed, this is the latest in a series of reports you've been receiving directly from our Expanded Community Advisory Panel. There's also a report from staff, and so in some ways, these are independent, but they're coming to you at the same time. So again, that may lead to some of what may feel like some inherent awkwardness in that you don't have your normal staff vetted and staff-presented PowerPoint, so you have a bit of two-step. So with the first step is Chantel Cotton Gaines.
Thank you. Good evening, city council. Chantel Cotton Gaines, Assistant to the City Manager, and Philip Cami, our Chief Transportation Official. So we are just giving you a quick intro, and then we're going to turn it over to Ms. Nadia Naik as Chair of the Expanded Community Advisory Panel, and Mr. Keith Rechtal, who is also on the XCAP. So the council asks for XCAP regular updates and also for them to evaluate the seven existing alternatives and to see if they have suggestions for other ideas. To date, you had an XCAP update on October 28th as well as on December 9th, so this is your third update. In this third update, they will provide the status of where they are in the process as well as their recommendations to council to consider adding three new ideas, up to three new ideas, to your list of existing seven alternatives for rail grade separations in Palo Alto, particularly at Churchill, Meadow, and Charleston. So staff and the consultants have done some preliminary analysis on the information presented that will be presented to you today, but we did want to offer a disclaimer before the presentation, similar to what Mr. Chikata said, that the cost, timeframe, constructability, and practicality of each of these new ideas has not yet been determined, and some of the information in the presentation is aspirational, so we wouldn't be able to verify all of that until further analysis is done. So as you receive the presentation, note the staff can provide more specific comments on the content of the presentation, but some of it will have to further analyze. So the recommendation to think and keep in mind is, should the council move forward with any of these, we would recommend that you direct proceeding, let me start that over, should the city council direct proceeding with further analysis on the three new ideas or any of the three, staff will work with our consultants and return to the city council with necessary revisions to the work plan, the schedule, and the budget for a contract amendment, as it will be additional time and cost related to the AECOM contract. So just wanted to keep that in mind. So with that, I will pass it over to Ms. Nadia Naik and Keith Rechtal to present the XCAP update.
Thank you. Just one moment. City clerk, can you tell me how many people we have for comment on this at the moment?
Eleven so far.
Okay. So folks, it'd be great if you do want to speak on this item, please get your cards into the city clerk. Ms. Naik, thank you for chairing the XCAP, and thank you for the presentation. Let's start with 20 minutes for the presentation, and if everyone could please try to get their cards in by the end of that time, then we will go to public comment, and then we'll come back to council for comments, questions, and motions. And I believe the XCAP has a presentation, correct?
We do have a presentation. If you can get that up. If I can do that, yeah. Yes.
And if we could just put that on the council monitors too, please. Thank you.
Great. Good evening, council members. I am Nadia Naik, the Chair of the Expanded Community Advisory Panel, or XCAP, and I'm here to give you your third update on our work so far. So you directed us to look at any new ideas, and we solicited the community, and we got several new ideas that came forward. Five of them passed initial review, and Keith is going to present those. We, I'm going to leave the majority of the time for Keith to go over those, because I know most of you are familiar with them already. But the new ideas were brought to XCAP and went through a vetting of both having the, they first had to get voted on by the XCAP to make sure that we really wanted to have people spend time on it. Of six ideas, five moved forward. Of those five ideas, they went to a group of the volunteer civil engineers that we had, there was three of them that came forward to help us, along with city staff and AECOM, and a subset of the XCAP, which we're calling the Technical Working Group, but really it's just XCAP members interested in technical details. And we had a meeting on those, reported back to XCAP, and after our report out, the subset of the XCAP did not make a decision. They simply sat through the meeting and then reported back. The XCAP then deliberated on the five ideas that had been presented and ultimately decided that three of them merited coming to city council for your approval for additional funding because we think that they make for more, some interesting alternatives. They are really building on what I would describe as the faults of the existing alternatives. There isn't, as you have read in the headlines, not any one alternative that everyone seems very enamored with, and so really, this is what this work reflects. I want to say that we've been working at a very quick pace. I know we've been doing this for a long time, and I know there's probably a lot of frustration that we're adding ideas and not subtracting ideas, but I do want to iterate that this is about quality. The ideas, the new ideas that are being presented, and really represent the fact that they're, the ones that we have are not great, and the community is really trying to respond to something better. So with that, I will give it to Keith.
Yeah, Nadia, walk through here, the five cases that we first looked at, then we trimmed that down to three, and we'll talk to those three tonight. Okay, so let's go through. So slide five. I know we're tight for time, so I'll try and keep it slow, keep it fast, but slow me down if you get confused or anything. Okay. Here are the, there's six columns here, and of these six columns, they represent the seven options we're considering, that two are doubled up there in the South Palo Alto Tunnel. And one thing to note is that, except for the Churchill closure, every one of these, we are moving the rail. Some of them are moving the rail up, some of them are moving the rail down, but none of them do the rail sit where they are today. And that's significant, and I'll get back to that. The second row is the cost numbers, and the first column is the hybrid, and that's costed at $202 million. And these are just rough numbers, but the civil engineers that Nadia mentioned, when they looked at that, they thought that's a little on the low side. Because remember, for the hybrid, you're changing Alma, you're changing Meadow, you're changing Charleston, you're changing the rails. Everything is moving. So they were skeptical that you could do that for $250 million. The second column, the viaduct, both the cost and the construction time is based on the assumption that the viaduct can be constructed without temporary shoe flight tracks. What the plan would be is you would build the viaduct right along Alma, and when it's done, then you would just zig the tracks over to the viaduct, and when you get to the other end of the viaduct, you'd zag them back to where they are today. But that zigging and zagging is exactly the opposite of what Caltrain is doing elsewhere on its system. They're paying money to straighten tracks because they're going to be, they're going to be using faster trains, and they don't want those little curves. So it's not clear whether Caltrain will allow us to do that zigging and zagging. If not, then the viaduct would require a temporary track, which is going to increase the cost and also increase the duration. So that's important. The third column is the trench, that $800 million. We don't have the breakdown of how that was constructed, but if you look what they did in Reno, for example, downtown Reno, next to casinos, in an urban environment, they built a trench twice as long as our trench, deeper than our trench, wider than our trench, and that included 11 crossings as opposed to, we just have Charleston, Meadow. They did that for $282 million, and we're quoting $800 here. Now granted, that was in Reno, and that was 15 years ago, so it's not apples to apples, but they're close. So we suspect that this $800 might be a little high. But still, if you back off, you say, regardless of how you tweak these numbers, all these projects are really big and really long. And that made us a little nervous in the XCAP, that are we barking up the wrong tree? Maybe we should be looking at options that have, you know, are they cheaper, cheaper, faster, better? Is that possible? The civil engineers that we were talking to, they said, you know, you really should never move the tracks unless you absolutely have to, because tracks move their slopes slow, slowly, that if you move them at all, just the size of the construction area just balloons. And when you have a huge construction area, that's huge construction time and huge construction cost. So they thought that we should be concentrating on areas, things like underpasses, where the rail stays exactly where it is, and you move the roads, because roads are much more pliable, and also they have less regulatory issues with that. You're the ones controlling your roads, and so you have a lot more freedom to do that. But the question is like, how did we get here? We had started with 37 options, and we pared them down, and now we're left with these, and we're not real happy with these. And part of it is, we started with so many options that you get into this mindset, kind of rock-throwing mode, that you want to kill all these alternatives. And how our performance was measured was, how many alternatives did you kill this week? And when you get into that mode, you don't have the luxury of this, for example, if you have an underpass that has some property impacts. Are there ways to mitigate it or eliminate it? That's hard, and you don't have the time, when you have 37 options, to do that hard work for all these cases. And so I think in some of those cases, we may have thrown the baby out with the bathwater. And so it's, we're now stepping back and saying, are there ways to do that? Have we overlooked some possible solutions that aren't in our current alternatives? So we asked, we asked the community for help in Palo Alto. We got help in Palo Alto. Even if you don't ask for help, you get help. So in this case, the help was very good. We have three good concepts here. The first one is at Charleston Meadow, the next is at Churchill, and the last one is in Barcadero. The Constant Flow Underpass, you know, this one, when I first saw it, I thought it was totally crazy. And so if you think it's a little crazy, you're in good company. But as I've gone, studied it more and talked to Elizabeth more, I really think it's, you know, it's bordering on genius. It's really well thought out, has a lot of nice little features, and it also has the potential of being the lowest-cost item. And so there's a lot of upside here, and so I definitely think we should be looking at that. Here are some of the reasons that we're not happy with the current alternatives. I mentioned a lot of these. The one I want to point down here, the existing alternatives do not improve circulation. So the status quo right now, today, and also all the alternatives... So the status quo right now, today, and also all the alternatives that we're considering, still have a light at Charleston and Alma. And Charleston carries a lot of school traffic in the morning by bike. So when that light goes red, then the bikes stop at that light, and the bikes kind of bunch up as the light is red. And when the light turns green, it's like a mad dash. It's like Walmart on Black Friday. They're just, they're, they're scurrying across that intersection, and meanwhile, the traffic is going right next to them. And, you know, it's now, that red light is not only an inconvenience for the bicyclists, it's also a safety issue. And none of the other designs address that at all. And this design does do that. So that's another reason why I like it. So here's a cartoon. There's a lot going on, I won't go through all of it, but I want to just highlight the big things. This is Charleston and Alma. On the right side is towards Middlefield, and on the left side is towards El Camino. And on the right side, there is a traffic circle, and then just to the left of that, we have five lanes. And the top lane is a dedicated bike pedestrian lane, and below that, we have four lanes of traffic, two going each direction. Now this bicycle lane is separated, it has a divider to separate it from the traffic lanes, but it also has the two-way traffic. So instead of having the other bike lane down on the, on the south side, we've put them both on the north. And the reason being is that Fair Meadow has no driveways, the circles there have no driveways on Charleston. So now that means that you can go, a bicycle can start at Alma and go all the way to Nelson, which is right by Hoover School. And then at that point, the bicyclists can go to Hoover School, they can go to Mitchell Park, Mitchell Park Library, they can go to Little League Diamond, they can go to JLS, all that by just going through one intersection at Nelson, which is a small intersection at that. So from a safety standpoint, and this is so heavily used for school aged children, that's a really nice feature. Then if you go to the left, that bike lane has a dedicated tunnel that goes under Alma, and then another dedicated tunnel that goes through Cal, under Caltrain. And so then it comes up and rises to the surface and hits Park, and now it's back at surface level. At Park, there's another trail here, it's labeled overpass, but it's just at ground level right now. These are recessed, the, the traffic lanes are recessed, so it actually goes over the traffic lanes, even though it's at ground level. And that allows all the bicyclists who come from, under that tunnel, to come out and access both north and south side of Park, without dealing with any intersections, without dealing with any lights. So it's a really nice design from a bicycle standpoint. Let's see. Oh, another nice point is that, right here, the bridge, you have one bridge that goes under Alma, another bridge that goes on the tracks, and there's a little space between it. So instead of having one long scary tunnel, it's broken up into two smaller tunnels, and that's a much better feel. And that also provides you a right turn lane that you'll see when we go through the auto turns. Another point is on the bottom left, Meadow is similar, except it's going to be a mirror image, because we want to take advantage of those lack of driveways along the circles, while on Meadow's side, it's on, the south side of Meadow has little driveways, no driveways, it has three intersections at that point. So we can again, put a two directional ped bike path along Meadow there, and the convenient thing about that is that leads you right to the schools. And so it's a real serendipity is going on here, the fact that those circles, any of the schools right there, really will help the safety of the schoolchildren, both on Meadow and on Charleston. Okay. Okay, so we talked about bicycles on the last one. Here's the traffic flow. And, so if you're coming from Middlefield, from the west, if you want to go straight, you'll go around the traffic circle and duck into this lane, and this lane goes under the tracks, and under Alma, and under the tracks. And the nice thing is that there's no lights there. You can continue going without a light. So as you go by Hoover School, and you have this nice flow of traffic, right now it just comes to a screaming halt when you hit Alma, or even worse, if a train comes through. Here, once that flow of traffic is starting going by Hoover School, it can continue under Alma, under the tracks, and all the way to El Camino. So this constant flow will make much better use. We waste so much time sitting at that light, this will really improve the flow of traffic. Now, if instead, if you want to take a turn on Alma, you get into the right lane here, and now this right lane stays at the surface. We only have two lanes that go below, and this right lane goes, stays at the surface. Here we stop, there'd be a light, and you could either take a left or a right at that light. So you still have a traffic light here on Alma, but the nice thing about it is that it's just supporting turning traffic on Charleston. And so there's far fewer turning traffic. Most of the traffic at this intersection goes straight through. So only a small portion will have to go through, which means this light can be much quicker, and the people sitting on Alma will not have to wait nearly as long. And as a result, this design not only helps the flow of traffic on Charleston, it also helps the flow of traffic on Alma.
Keith, if I could just point out one thing.
Okay.
So these are all conceptual, so I don't want anyone to get caught up on the fact that I'm probably, and I say "I" because I had to draw this picture, so, that there's missing turn lanes and traffic signals. My colored pencil skills were just not that great, so just remember, this is all conceptual, and so a lot of it obviously needs to be verified.
Yes. And another point is, Nadia's totally correct, is that this is just a concept, and one thing we want is we want some professional help with the traffic consultants, and maybe they might say, a roundabout here is better. I suspect with the flow of, at Alma, the traffic, level of traffic, you'd probably want a light, but that's where a traffic consultant, having someone else to help us with this, would be very useful. Okay. Okay, yeah, we'll try and speed this up here. As I mentioned, most of the traffic goes straight at this intersection, but those that turn in the afternoon, majority are coming from El Camino, going down towards Mountain View. And if that's, if you're coming from El Camino, you get a dedicated lane. So at this point, you have three lanes, two going to the right and one going to left. One of those goes up into a dedicated turn lane, goes under the tracks, but then rises to the surface and merges in eventually with Alma. And we have enough room there that this can be a long merge, it doesn't have to be short like the one at Oregon Expressway. But then, the other two lanes, that we just have two lanes then that go under Alma and continue through. So if you go through, let's see, yeah. One second here. Yeah. And so if you, if you want to be going north, so you're coming from El Camino, and you want to be going northbound Alma, you would go under the tracks, under Alma, and then you have to go to the traffic circle, you're back at, at grade, back at normal ground level, and you take a U-turn, and take a right at Alma. So that's a little funky, that backtracking may bother some people, but we do this on El Camino all the time. If you come out of a driveway, and you want to take a left, what do you do? You take a right, go down the light and take a U-turn. People are used to that, and I think they would get used to this. But a grade separation is kind of like the movie or the book Moneyball. The Oakland A's realized that they couldn't afford the superstars. So any player that they would sign would have faults, and their goal was to find a player whose faults were tolerable. Okay? So in our case, we're not going to get the superstars. So we're, any, any grade separation we choose is going to have some shortcomings. And the question is, are these shortcomings tolerable? And when I look at this, this backtracking may be a little annoying, but if you compare that to Alma going down to two lanes for four years, this is a pretty good trade. So the fact that this construction, this would have one small piece of construction, and, and is a big benefit, and this to me is a very small drawback. Okay. One more point, is when you take, when you have a bike lane that's going along the right side, at intersections, there's always this conflict, because if you want to turn right with your car, and that bike wants to go straight, there's this chance for intersections, or, for collisions. The nice thing here is that this right turn lane is at ground level, but the bicycle lane now is diving under. So as you take that right turn, you don't have to worry about bikes at all, you're going over the bicycles, and so this is a much safer situation for bicyclists. So I, I think this, from a, again, from a bicycle standpoint, this is a big win. Okay. Okay, okay, we'll keep going. Next one, if you're coming from the south, and you want to take a left turn, you, if you're coming, uh?
Sorry, you're going to the front.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, I was, I was quick there. So suppose you're coming from Mountain View, and you want to go towards El Camino. It's the same story. You would take a right here, on a dedicated turn lane, go to the roundabout, reverse yourself, go under the track, under the Alma and under the tracks. So there's some backtracking there, but the important thing is that that's all done without a light. If you want to do that move today, or with any of the other alternatives, you sit in a left turn lane, waiting for that left turn arrow. But here, you can go through, take your right turn, and go around the roundabout, and you don't hit any lights at all. So even though you're backtracking, you're probably going to be saving time. So I think this is a very nice flow of traffic. Okay? And then this next one, same song, if you want to cross, across the tracks, you have to go back, backtrack a little. This has a lot of stuff, talking about the concepts and goals. The point I want to say is that cost-saving designs, is that you have to really, when you're doing these designs, really work hard, and this works hard to try, do two things. We're trying to shrink the footprint. And one thing you do is, is limit only one lane in each direction under Alma. When you go in by Hoover School, it's one lane each direction, we don't need any more than that here. And if you try to supersize things, you increase costs, and also the design can blow up. The other thing you do is you also want to shrink it, make the dive as shortly, as short as possible. These last two things accomplish that.
So, so Mr. Rechtal, I just want to note, that's 20 minutes, but can we, do you think we can get to the next two in 15?
Yeah, we're almost there.
Another 15?
Yeah. Yeah, sorry.
It's okay.
Man, I don't want to leave stuff on the...
It's important stuff, don't rush.
Yeah, okay. So I mentioned that about being disciplined. If this is deja vu, it should be. In 2014, we looked at the same type of design, but it blew up, and the reason being is HMM supersized it. They added more capacity than we needed. And what happened? The intersection got wider, the road got wider, we had to take driveways, and once you take someone's driveway, we're taking the house, and we lost a lot of houses because of that. And so you really have to say, what do we really need? And limit yourself to that, and the nice haves can make designs blow up. Okay? These are things that we want to look at, if we had further work. Most importantly is eliminate shoe flight tracks. These temporary tracks, they interfere with Alma, they cost time, they cost money. So we really want to, and so in Long Island Railroad, they wanted to do their grade separations without any shoe flight tracks. So they, what they did is they built the tunnels right next to them, and then over the weekend, as you notice the trains in the background, they shut down the rail for one weekend, and they were able to jack this under, and then Monday morning, the trains were working again. And so that was a big savings in time, a big savings in money to get rid of those shoe flight tracks. Our consultants are skeptical of whether Caltrain could do that, but the Long Island Railroad is, it's commuter train, just like Caltrain, so there's no engineering issue, there's no regulatory issue. It all comes down to whether Caltrain's management is comfortable with this. And we have 100 million reasons why they should get comfortable with this. It's really important. And so this is not something that they'll just blindly, this isn't, I don't believe Caltrain has done this before, so there may be some work to get them to agree with that, but it has high, such high potential for saving time and money that we should look into it. The other thing, and this is, this design has a lot of reality based in it, including, here's an intersection in the Lily that uses the same design. They have a train track over here, and some of the turns have to go back to this roundabout, just like ours. And it works well. And here's another, here's the same intersection, they have two lanes, just one in each direction. One thing that they do different is their right turn, they have a little more room here, they have both a left turn and a right turn at the light. The cartoons that we had only had a single lane. If we had room, we'll put both of them in. We certainly will not have that room for Meadow, but maybe for Charleston, that would be a nice addition. It would help with traffic flow a little more. Okay. Potential weaknesses, it's just the backtracking, and it has the potential, especially if you can do without shoe flight, for being a very small and compact construction area, which again, will be short duration, small amount of money. That's our hope and our plan. Okay. Are there any questions on that, or should I move on to Churchill?
Let's, let's move on to Churchill for now, and then I think when we come to council, we'll all go through each of them, hopefully in the same order.
Yeah. This is a little more straightforward, so we can zip through this as much as we can. Churchill, you have two options right now, one of them is closure, which is unpopular to some people, and viaduct was unpopular to others. And this is a third option. And again, deja vu, that we looked at this before, and there are a lot of takings. And the reason we had to take people's houses is that the underpass, so this is an underpass, this design, the rail stays exactly where it is, and you lower Churchill to go under that. When they've studied that before, what happens? They lowered all of Alma, and they also lowered all of Churchill. So the houses up here lost their driveways, and houses along here lost their driveway. And so what this design is doing is, it's, it's a little funky also. You have one lane here that stays right at the surface, and that allows all these properties to still access, and Churchill up here stays at surface level. The only thing that depresses is this end of Churchill and this end. And that effectively makes us a T-intersection, and makes us a T-intersection. You can't go straight through like you can today. So you lose a little functionality, but you gain access through here without a viaduct. Let me skip over this one. This is a better picture. This is looking, looking southbound behind Pally, and these are southbound lanes. They depress, you can see Churchill over here is depressed. On the far left, that's that one lane of northbound, which is still at ground level. And this is the opposite direction. And you can see that we have one lane that goes up and one lane that goes down. So if you want to go through straight, if you're just going to downtown, you have two options, and then as you go through, you can pick either one. Now, the consultant that looked at that, they were nervous about this decision point. And they also were worried about construction, because during construction, you'll, will be down to one lane as you dig this out. So they suggested moving this retaining wall over, and having two lanes go northbound, and that those two lanes could support traffic while you're doing construction. And then that also makes it easier for the decision point.
It's just a concept.
Yeah, it's just the concept again. We, I mean, this is, this is just a, not a final design, this is just meant to be ideas of, could this work? And, okay, and let's go and talk about bicycles. This also retains bicycle access by having a bridge that goes over. We may want to move that elsewhere, because if you move, one of the problems is if you incorporate bicycles into this, then during construction, there's no bike access to Pally. So you may want, either at SEAL or Kellogg, have a separate bike tunnel that goes through, and then if that's done beforehand, then while this is being constructed, you wouldn't have any issues with bike access. The other thing this does is, since you are crossing one or two lanes of traffic, there's a light here, and you still have that same bunching issue that I talked about before. When this is red during school hours, you get a bunch of bikes backed up, and you have a thin little track that would go down and reverse through. So this is just a concept. Again, we want to see, is this the best place to put a bike bridge, or is there other options? We can skip through that. Caltrain has a right of way, that some of this does encroach on that. Our current intersection also encroaches on that. Our current one is at ground level, this encroachment would be a lower portion. So now you, you'd have to get their permission to do that. But that's something that we can, we can work. Okay, the third one is in Barcadaro. And so the first two, we're thinking small. How can we minimize our area that we're, that our construction area, and then try to minimize cost by doing that? This is, kind of goes the opposite direction. This is thinking big. And this is in response to the fact that one of the options we're considering is a viaduct at Churchill. And the argument is that if you're going to be spending $400 million for a viaduct at Churchill, why don't you, if you slid that up and instead had that same viaduct at Barcadaro, would the money be better spent there? And this is just saying, by putting a viaduct at Barcadaro, you now are decoupling the road design from the rail design. And would you be able to create something? And would you be able to create something that flows better? Right now, this is a potential mitigation that was discussed, but this would be one option, but I'm using this as just a picture of an area right now, is that this whole area is kind of broken in half. If instead you put some, a roundabout or some other type of more pedestrian-friendly access, would that unite these neighborhoods and make it more cohesive? And so that's the, the concept, is that the money from the Churchill viaduct to be spent here would now give you a clean slate to design your Embarcadero-Alma intersections. And we're not, and in this packet, we have a couple pictures of roundabouts. I'm not sure, again, with the traffic on Alma, whether the roundabout would be efficient or not. But we're just saying that this is a blank slate. And we would like some traffic engineers to look at this and said, well, what would you do if you had a blank slate and you didn't have this existing underpass to deal with? And that, and it, one of the reasons for doing this is it just, it feels more Palo Alto to have a walkable neighborhood through that area as opposed to the intersection that we have today. Okay. Do you want to mention about the...
Sure. Okay, we're ready to wrap up, but obviously we'd like to hear your thoughts on whether you agree that we should spend money on these three alternatives. But in addition, XCAP is requesting if you have any additional feedback or guidance for our group. And if you have thoughts on things that you'd like to see in the final report that XCAP will be bringing forward. As a reminder, we're due to bring back something to you by April 30th. It'll take us a while to write and deliberate on the exact words and whether we want things phased or not, or whether we're going to recommend one, but if we can't afford one, we'll recommend another. We haven't gotten to that point yet. But our deliberations are going to be kind of moving quickly. And I think so far, we've been very efficient. I did also want to mention that we have two important guest speakers that are coming to our next meeting. So Caltrain will be coming to our next meeting. If, I know council members often, it's been a while since I think you've heard from Caltrain. So the next XCAP meeting, which is next Wednesday from four to seven, we will have Sebastian Petty coming and answering XCAP's questions directly about grade separations. And second is, on February 5th, we have an eminent domain attorney, Norm Mattione, who's going to be speaking to the XCAP to explain what kind of rights or what kind of impacts, what property impacts are, how they're handled legally, what kind of compensation folks might be receiving. So as we consider these alternatives, everybody really understands what that means for our fellow neighbors. And so I would encourage council members who are interested to certainly attend our meeting. With that, I will leave it for you guys. Thank you for your patience. Sorry, we were not a little faster.
No.
Oh, next XCAP meeting is tomorrow, but we don't have any of those. Oh, Sebastian's tomorrow? No, next week, because he had to be postponed. Yes.
Thank you very much. Just two quick comments from my colleagues in the public. There are two at places, memos. One is intersection level of service at some intersections in the Professoreville area. And another is some further illustrations of the second price plan by Mr. Price and Mr. Chacon. So those may help. I want to go to my council colleagues for any clarifying questions on the presentation. Just brief, something you didn't understand or would like a little bit more detail on. Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yeah, just briefly. So for the Charleston one, as you know, it's been discussed, it hinges on the idea that actually you could build a simple underpass without having to raise the tracks, right? Why do we think that's possible when we didn't used to?
When Hatchmont looked at that back in 2014, it was in a time when the city was actually responding to high-speed rail. And so we sort of got the study back and the study back showed that, wow, if you really lower that intersection a lot, you have a lot of property damage. And we kind of didn't look at it further. And so sort of, I would say that partially no one really looked hard to see that, oh, the assumptions that they used was that the intersection actually had more lanes than it has today. They also assumed a very thick rail bridge. So they weren't trying to solve the question of, if that's what you had to do, how do you make it happen? It was more, if you do this to us, what are you doing to us? And so when we went through the 36 alternatives, we never went back and looked at that more closely.
Staff, got any thoughts on that?
Yeah, actually, I have some comments on, on all of these if it would be appropriate for me to speak on them at this time.
Sure.
Yeah. I know, I know we've already run over a bit, but you know, the XCAP update presentation did a really great job explaining the three new ideas that have been brought forward by the XCAP group members of the public. Thoroughly details the aspects and the concepts as best known at this time. While there are good details about what the new ideas are, there are also details that are aspirational at this time and based on currently known information. So, you know, one example of this is the reference to the cost of the hybrid, which was insinuating that the cost estimate given by AECOM was incorrect. AECOM, our consultant. And that it's missing something very significant in the calculations. However, the estimate was based on two recent grade crossings in the peninsula, in Berlingame and San Mateo. And also include escalations and the understanding of the standard Caltrain work requirements. Also, with the currently limited analysis that we have of the Elizabeth Alexis proposal, there's not a guarantee that there won't be any shoe fly tracks. But the consultant does believe that there will be, you know, still duration and construction impacts due to the heavy excavation, the driving of sheet piling, and the potential need to pile drive for the retaining walls. And also, not mentioned in, in the presentation, not that this presentation could cover everything and actually was very extensive, but there's also the possibility of increased street traffic in the residential neighborhoods, specifically on Mumford and Eli Place, as there will be some queuing at the light going northbound on Alma. And also additional traffic analysis would be needed to show the number of lanes that are needed for this idea. And our consultant does believe that this proposal still would have quite a few property impacts and potentially entire property acquisitions that are necessary, specifically at the roundabout at Charleston, Mumford, and also some sliver acquisitions. And as mentioned, there will be a little bit more circuitousness on this alternative. I believe that Keith did a good job describing that. Going to Michael Price's proposal, the second proposal, there will, would also be partial property takes for this idea likely. And there will be some eliminated traffic movements due to the depression of the street. For example, the removal of left turns to and from Alma and Kellogg and Colridge, and also the right turn from northbound Mariposa. And then from the final proposal, the third proposal, the roundabout that was shown in the illustration is a single lane roundabout, but it's likely going to require a two-lane roundabout.
Thank you. If you, if I could just ask that you enter those into the record or provide them to council maybe in an email after this meeting. Councilmember Phil Seth.
So if I understand what, what you just said, Philip, is that, I mean, it would seem to have a lot of value not to have to move the tracks at Charleston and Meadow, okay? And have shoe flies and raise everything and so forth. And so you're, you're not certain that's possible, is what I understood?
Yeah, I would say it's not a guarantee at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Koo.
What is the Stanford roundabout? Is it a one lane also? Or is it a two lane on Galvez? Is it across from Embarcadero?
Yeah, I believe it is two lanes. I can check.
I get people in the audience saying it's one, two. It's two, okay. And Keith, Nadia, the one that is Churchill, it doesn't go through Alma, right? It's only a turn left and right?
Correct. I think I would agree with all of what Philip said. I mean, there, there are definite not pretty things in some of these things. And, and I think we forgot to clarify our bad at the very beginning of the presentation that, yes, there are aspirations, because we basically took the presentations that were made by each of the people presenting them, and we have presented that. So we probably should have made it more clear that this is not XCAP saying that these are the aspirations, that this was what was presented to XCAP by the people who brought the ideas forward. So I did want to just make that clear.
And you did say they're conceptual, so they do want studying...
Yeah, they're all conceptual. So where you see two lanes could be one, where there's one lane, there could be two. You know, none of us on XCAP are unfortunately traffic experts, so.
Right. Well, the thing is, it's also, I guess I'll save my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ness.
Thank you both. And particularly, thank you, Nadia, who is willing to spend time with each one of us going over this in some detail. So I'm fascinated by Elizabeth Alexis's proposal. And Councilmember Phil Seth just asked you about going under. And we can think of two other places where you go under, one on Oregon and one, of course, on Embarcadero. If you were to go under there, looking at the old studies that were done, can you get enough depth to get under there or not? And I think that's what Eric was asking and you were referencing back to the previous study.
So our understanding is yes, you could. And what, there's some things that, and I'm sure the actual trained engineers could speak to this further, but there are some things that, that change how quickly you can go under. So as an example, Oregon actually goes under multiple roads and it's a very long stretch. But if you've ever been to the movie theater in Redwood City, when you go on Jefferson Avenue, between El Camino and Middlefield is simply a block. And you actually dip down and make it under the tracks and back up in less than a block. And they were able to achieve that because they reduced the speed from 25 miles an hour to 20. So there are some design tweaks that you have to make to traffic and you have to accept some trade-offs, right? We might accept that you might have to go a little bit slower under some of these intersections. It would not be an Oregon Expressway-type speed in order to be able to clear the tracks and make it back up and have a limited footprint. The other thing that Elizabeth's design really focuses on is having a very thin rail bridge that's critical. And the Hatchmont consultants didn't sort of try to make that happen. That depth matters because it guides how far back you have to begin. And the third thing is that she really limited the size to two lanes plus the bike ped tunnel. And that also helps keep it very narrow. At Jefferson, you have the bikes and the pads right adjacent to the road. They go a little bit higher than the cars, kind of like we do now at Embarcadero. The other thing about her design is it puts the bikes and the pedestrians in a completely separate tunnel, but that is daylighted.
Yeah. So one other thing, because I happen to be, I've been on El Camino and, and the adjacent streets recently. And how many of you have actually driven from here to the city and looked at the different underpasses? Because looking at San Carlos today, I was, I hope nobody's here from San Carlos, and apologies to Nellie. But it's, I see it as very unattractive and is a real division in that community. And it goes on for quite some period of time. Apologies if you're from San Carlos. But I think there's, there's real merit in, in somebody starting and driving as far as you can, one way or the other, to see how these underpasses have actually been constructed. It's, there is a, a whole variety out there. So thank you so much for all you've done. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you. And the final line I see is Councilmember Tanaka. Nope, okay. Can we quickly go see how many folks we have for comments? 19, thank you. Okay. All right. I'm going to call a five-minute break, just so we can, we've been here for two hours. Come back at 8:08 and, I guess, two or three, two? All right. Given the hour and that we do have a somewhat busy schedule ahead, I'm going to limit comments to two minutes per person. I apologize for that. I know it's not everyone's favorite, but with almost 20 speakers in a group, I think it's the prudent thing to do. So we'll be back in five minutes.
We've got, we're getting to the action items with three big action items tonight. And this is obviously the big one with 20 speakers. Mayor Fine has limited it to two minutes per speaker. The action item is, of course, includes reports of commissions, ordinances, and resolutions, public hearings, reports of officials, unfinished business, and council matters. And connecting the Palo Alto Railgate separation is to receive an update and recommendation from the expanded community advisory panel, XCAP, and potential modification of the list of grade separation alternatives to add up to three concepts. Additional alternatives for study at Churchill, Charleston, and Meadow grade crossings. Then, and that's part of A. Part of B is to provide direction to staff regarding the next steps, including a consultant contract amendment for scope, budget, and schedule modifications. Then we have our next action item. Now, this action item was supposed to go from 7 o'clock to 7:15 to 8:45. I think it'll go far beyond that. After that, we get into the item number three. Action item is an update and discussion of planning development services, housing work, and direction to modify or direct new assignments related to housing and other department assignments. And this is scheduled to go from 8:45 to 9:45 tonight. And then action item number three is a council-appointed officers committee recommendation that council discuss and accept the city auditor's office organizational study report and provide direction on the next steps. And that is supposed to go from 9:45 to 10:30. But it definitely looks like this is going to go farther than that. I think we're probably going to go maybe into the morning hours if, if not. We will be going into, maybe, maybe past midnight tonight. We'll see. This definitely should be Adrian Fine's longest meeting so far of his young administration. Next week, we're back with our regularly scheduled broadcast on Monday, January 27th. It's a city council meeting at 6:00 PM. There's a closed potential litigation, though. So there is a closed session, so we might be on at 7:00. We get in and we discuss preferred alternatives for improvements to San Antonio Road and East Charleston Road intersection and direct staff to complete final design plans, environmental analysis, specifications, and estimates for construction. Then the staff update and council consideration regarding polling results, analysis, and public outreach regarding a possible tax measure for the 2020 election. Then the request of approval of an agreement between the City of Palo Alto, representing the Cable Joint Powers, and Mid Peninsula Community Media Center Incorporated for Public Education and Government Access, known as PEG or PEG, Channel Support Services, Memo of Agreement between the Cable Joint Powers covering the use of public education and government and public fees. Item number three on that is to authorize the city manager to execute a grant agreement at the Mid Peninsula Community Media Center Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $511,536. And item number four on that is to amend the fiscal year 2020 budget appropriation for ordinance and technology fund to recognize $511,536 in revenue and expense. Then we get on to February and we're, we start February 3rd, Monday, February 3rd, 6:00 PM broadcast, although there is a closed session on litigation that may push that to a 7:00 start. We'll see. The action on that is review and acceptance of the report of the Palo Alto History Museum Roth Building at 300 Homer Avenue and fundraising goal and extension of validation period to complete the option of lease agreements. Then the acceptance of the fiscal year 2021, fiscal year to 2030 long-range financial forecast, and fiscal year 2021 budget development guidelines. Then the council ad hoc committee discussion of boards and commissions. And then the adoption of a... of a resolution scheduling the city council's summer break and winter closure for 2020. So that's February 3. Now, February 4, there is a finance committee meeting on that. That is not broadcast, but our next broadcast after the February 3 is February 10, another Monday night broadcast at 6:00 PM. There's a study session on 2020 sustainability and the cap for that. And then the action item on that is public tougher hearing regarding conduit financing for Wilton Court project located at 3703 to 3709 El Camino Real in Palo Alto and approving the issuance of revenue obligations by the California Municipal Finance Authority and for the purpose of financing the acquisition, development, construction, and equipping a 59-unit multifamily rental housing facility for low-income households and other matters relating thereto. Then there's the discussion and direction to the staff regarding the establishment of a pension funding policy. So that is February 10, but then there is other things coming up that I didn't mention. And before the February 3 meeting on Saturday, February 1, it's the annual council retreat at Mitchell Park at El Palo Alto Rome. And that starts at 9:00 AM and goes to about 3:00. And through that, they put out the priorities for the council. That really sets the priorities for Mayor Fine and his administration. So that is something that...
Well, we don't have a quorum yet.
Doesn't matter, they'll come right in.
All right. I'd like to call this meeting back to order if our council colleagues could return to their seats. And our first speaker will be Michael Chacon speaking for himself, Dexter Gerton, Barbara Hazlitt, Rachel Kellerman, Tom Kellerman, and Sarah Gerton. As I mentioned before our break, all speakers will have two minutes. I apologize for the brevity. And a group like this, we're going to give you six.
Arrow up is forward.
And folks, if we could just be quiet, please, and respect the speakers. Mr. Chacon, you're our first speaker. Let us know when you're ready.
Okay. Thank you very much for hearing me tonight. My name is Michael Chacon. I live at the, my wife and I live at the corner of High Street and Embarcadero. And I'm speaking not only for myself, my wife, the Kellermans who live on Emerson, Barbara Hazlitt who lives on Emerson and Embarcadero, and Dexter Gerton who lives on High and Embarcadero as well. So I want to thank the Kellermans, first of all, for alerting us about this potential impact to our neighborhood. I had no idea what was going on until she sent out a flyer about two months ago. Since that time, we've had several community meetings in our neighborhood, in our house, the Kellermans, and others, to discuss this potential impact. And I've also attended all the XCAP meetings since because this is very important to me and my wife and our neighbors. Oh, as a side note, we've been asking for a meeting, a face-to-face meeting with the traffic consultant, and have not gotten that. And I'm just reiterating that request. We've made that request to XCAP several times. They've attempted, but have been unsuccessful. And I'm now passing on to the city council. We would like to talk with the traffic consultant. We have questions about their study and their plan. Okay, Churchill options. So currently, before consideration for the XCAP's presentation, there are two Churchill options. And I'm focused on Churchill because I live in the neighborhood of Embarcadero, which has a potential impact if Churchill's closed. The closure would, if it were closed, would bifurcate Palo Alto. That's pretty straightforward. And it would isolate the Castelaya residents as well. They would have to use El Camino to get around and across Alma. If it were closed, if Churchill were closed, it'd be a monumental impact on Embarcadero because, not only of the separation of traffic, but also because Castelaya's future enrollment plans, as well as Stanford's 3.5 million future expansion plans, which I know they pulled off the table, but will come back, is going to add traffic to Embarcadero. There's no denying that. The viaduct would eliminate residents' privacy. And I'm sure there are a lot of residents Castelaya who just don't want that. And to the comment about, Councilmember Liz Ness said about San Carlos, I agree with you. I think that's unsightly. It certainly is functional. It works. But I would see a viaduct in a very similar vein. It's not very Palo Alto-ish. The viaduct also is financially untenable, especially when you consider the South Palo Alto crossings. So that's just something that doesn't make sense at this point in my mind. Either option would cause more, create more issues than they solve. And by the way, the 10-year outlook for the study is insufficient. And I want to get to and tie that into in a second, in that we should at least be looking forward 20 years, even though we may not have data from Caltrain. Caltrain looks forward 15 years right now. And maybe the comprehensive plan is not reconciled against that outlook, but we need to collect data. We need to then make projections, projections that make sense for a long period of time, not for one decade. So Michael Price's plan is compelling. And so with his permission, I was able to develop that a little further and try and put a face on it that shows that it could not only work and be functional, but it actually has, the potential has some character to it and be something that would be, I think, acceptable to Palo Alto and its residents. First and foremost, his plan is bring safety to pedestrians and bicyclists. Yes, they do have to cross the single lane at grade on Alma, but that single lane really is designed more for the residents that live on Alma than it is for lots and lots of through traffic. So they'll have an opportunity, once they cross that street, to then navigate under the tracks, navigate over the top of the tracks, go to Palo Alto High School, Castelaya neighborhood, without any more lights, without any more street crossings. That's the first primary benefit I see there. I'm not going to go through all the eastbound, westbound. I'll show you the images I came up with. Clearly, you cannot turn left off Churchill onto Alma from, if you're headed westbound, and you can't go straight across either, in either direction. Other than that, you can make all the turns you'd like. The cost is going to be significantly less than a viaduct, first of all, and it eliminates the potential to consider University Avenue, elevating University Avenue train station if there were a viaduct placed there, because there's ascent-descent considerations for the train. And the university train station may or may not comply with those standards that are developed by Caltrain. Contrary to what Philip said, I went through and I did a lot of field measuring and collected GIS information. Per my calculations, there are no partial property takings with Michael Price's plan. So I'll show you that in a sec here. Okay, so what this is, is this is a site plan. This gives you an indication of the area we're talking about. And I'm not going to go through all of it because it's really hard to see. It's very small scale from here. But I just wanted to show you that north is to the left, Alma is running horizontal on the page, Churchill's in the center runs north and south, or up and down, which is east and west, and you cannot cross Alma at Churchill. That is the fundamental point there, okay? As I said, I field-measured the intersection, the tracks, the trees, the utility poles, the driveways, the curbs. I field-measured all that. I asked for that information from the city. The city had difficulty getting that to me. It took them over a month approximately to get it to me. So I did it all on my own. And then they did provide it, and I back-checked my field measurements against GIS data. And I'd say the city is relatively close to actual conditions. So what I did was, I literally modeled the entire intersection, the bridges, pedestrian bridges over Alma, the railroad crossing over Churchill, and the pedestrian bridge over Churchill as well. What I was trying to show here is that it is not only a viable plan, and by the way, I just want to say, I don't necessarily think this is a perfect plan. I think this is a much better option than a viaduct or closure. And that's the only reason I'm presenting it here, is hopefully that you'll see that too, and you'll authorize additional spending for the consultant. This view here, excuse me, this view here is from a bird's-eye view looking toward the west, over Alma, almost running left and right. And those two cars you see are Churchill. They're waiting to turn left or turn right. Here's a view looking from the, looking northward over Alma, and you can get a better idea of the pedestrian bridge. Michael Price's plan was a conceptual in nature, and he showed a rectangular-shaped bridge. I expanded on that in the way that you can have bicyclists, pedestrians all use that bridge with plenty of room. And as a point to add to, when they go down the tunnel and they return back up, they cross underneath the railroad tracks and come back up, that tunnel is curved per Michael Price's plan too. So bicyclists can continue to ride and make that, and reduce the potential for bottlenecks. What you should note here too is that we currently, we Palo Alto-Alma encroach on the Caltrain right-of-way. Is that just one, right? That's not 10?
We gave you two extra minutes, but if you could just finish your thought.
That's 10 minutes?
That was eight.
I'm going to go faster.
If you'd just finish up your last thought, but thank you.
I have something to show you. Yep. I'll just go through these real quick, okay? Another view looking southbound, pedestrian bridge, the fact that you go underneath the pedestrian bridge on Alma, Churchill looking toward Palo Alto High School. You would need an intersection most likely with the traffic signals at Castelaya Churchill to help monitor, moderate the traffic. And then the Churchill Bridge as well. And here's a little video I created, which hopefully will give you some better indication of how this works. You're on Churchill. You're approaching toward Palo Alto High School, almost in front of you. If you don't mind that that bicyclist just went across a red light. And here's on the pedestrian bridge looking around. You're looking south over Palo Alto. You're turning around. There's Palo Alto High School, where all those redwoods are, leading you to the tunnel. The pedestrian bridge is looking toward the south, over Alma Street. And you see cars turning right underneath. They can turn right onto Churchill. The cars that you can just see beyond the bridge down below are waiting to turn left. And here's the Churchill pedestrian bridge, which allows bicyclists and pedestrians to cross over Churchill without having to cross the street at grade. I'm going to just do this last one. This is the last, I just want to get this because this is really important. So this is a cost versus influence curve. And with my practice, I tell all my clients that if we can collect all the data upfront, and even more data than we might think we need, we can then use that information to make recommendations to move forward in projects. This is an opportunity for the council to do that. And right now, we're looking at maybe biting off too much in that South Palo Alto, Churchill potentially rolls into Embarcadero. Maybe we should just focus on South Palo Alto, get those going, learn from that, let Churchill alone for now, maybe do some light monitoring, some gates down to emulate crossings, things like that, collect the data, and then make an informed decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next speaker will be Mr. Michael Price. I think the gentleman has a presentation. Is it queued up?
No, we're not going to do the presentation.
Okay, welcome.
Thanks. So I'm Michael Price. I live in South Gate neighborhood. And this design was motivated because the alternatives on the table had significant objections. There were, alternatives were they were taking properties, or they're creating these big structures that people didn't like, or they were closing the intersection, which a lot of people didn't like. And the attempt is to find a compromise which avoids all those serious objections and gets as much of the intersection functionality there as possible. And that's really the purpose of this design. The requirements were to not take properties, to leave Caltrain where it was, not move it, and to provide a significant improvement in the bike and pedestrian separation from traffic at that intersection, which is a mess because of Palo Alto every morning and evening. So I would hope that the council would see enough merit in this to take a further look at it in detail, to really evaluate its costs and implementation. Since there was an analysis done of an underpass at Churchill, a lot of the costs, such as utility impacts, have already been assessed. And so a lot of that work has been done and can be reused. And so I don't think that looking at this is going to take that much more incremental money to really understand it well. And I think that it's, it gives an alternative and an option here that I think is worth considering. So I hope that the council would move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Our next speaker is Young J. O. Welcome.
Good evening, honorable members of Palo Alto City Council. My name is Young J. O. My husband and I live on Churchill Avenue in South Gate. We strongly and passionately support Churchill closure as the best of all the alternatives under consideration. Admittedly, not perfect, but the best available solution all considered. And the beauty of Churchill closure is that it is a minimal-cost solution that does not preclude implementing other alternatives in the future if that should prove advantageous. This opinion is shared by the more than 500 Palo Alto residents that signed a Churchill closure petition submitted to the city council a few months ago. Based on Page 7 of the staff report, it would be difficult to maintain the April 30 deadline if further work on the two new Churchill alternative is pursued. Therefore, we urge you not to proceed with the two new Churchill alternative for the following four reasons. First, avoiding further slippage of the gate separation schedule. Second, avoiding the additional cost of half a million dollars of further studies. Third, the Carrasco and others' proposal for rethinking the Embarcadero-Alma intersection is very appealing. However, it can be further studied later on as part of the mitigation measures associated with Churchill closure without jeopardizing the grade separation schedule. Lastly, the Michael Price proposal, half of the road under rail alternative that had already been rejected at the very beginning of this process. The proposal is too complex, cumbersome, and costly for the minor benefits it promises. It seems to be mainly motivated by the desire of some South Gate residents to maintain access to Alma and save a few minutes on their commutes. Can I go just two more sentences?
Please.
Sorry about this. Furthermore, there are much simpler and cost-effective measures that are glaringly available to improve the desired access, namely, the remover of the current street closures in South Gate, such as on Park Boulevard. The proposal also poses a major safety risk, would likely require partial takeover of some residential property, and Caltrain right-of-way, and will reduce curb setback distances for some homes along Alma. It will also disfigure the neighborhood and become a permanent eyesore forever, aggravating those who have come to love this neighborhood. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Folks, if we could reserve applause or otherwise commenting, just to make sure everybody feels comfortable with their ability to comment here. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Alexis, to be followed by Eduardo Latch.
Good evening, council. First, can I just say, like, Michael Shackett, that was amazing. And I just think this is a great town we live in where people produce whole video. Anyway, it's amazing. My name is Elizabeth Alexis. I'm here tonight as a resident of South Palo Alto to ask you to approve some additional work on a new underpass alternative for Charleston-Meadow. Maybe not new, but let's say slightly improved. The idea, which does need more work and has a significant number of variations, has the potential for significant savings in both money and construction time. Do we... Do we need any new alternatives? Yes. I have heard skepticism tonight, and when talking to neighbors, that Caltrain will really be expanding service. In the past, the skepticism might have been warranted. Today, however, the organization and the entire rail corridor is in a different place. The new business plan sees a 60% increase in service by 2027 and more in future years. We need to understand that Caltrain will not wait for all the great separations to be done to move to increase its service, and the cost impacts of any alternative today, we need to look and compare those to the traffic issues that we will have from doing nothing. We need to get moving. I don't think that any of the alternatives on the table right now will get to consensus and make it to the finish line. I've done this six times now. And this is why I took an idea from a neighbor's question, we got naughtiest colored pencils out. It's a concept, there are no guarantees, but I think the possibility of project that could be done within the VTA budget is worth spending a little time and money on. Thank you.
Thank you. Eduardo Latch, to be followed by Terry Latch.
Yes, thank you. I live in Churchill, and four, five of our kids went to Pali. We've had two pets killed on Churchill. Churchill is a family street, it's not a highway. And all the work that has been done analyzing traffic indicates that about 60% of the traffic going through Churchill is actually traffic just going by it, getting from Alma to El Camino or vice versa. And what we'd like to do is to suggest very strongly what Imion said, which was, close Churchill, turn back that area into a family area where kids can actually get in and out of Pali without traffic, and not into a highway, whether the Mike Price plan or the viaduct will do. And so we strongly suggest that you consider the closure of Churchill to open up park so that people in South Gate can get in and out of South Gate by using Embarcadero. On a personal level, I find it a little bit disturbing that someone who doesn't live in Churchill spent a significant amount of time planning what to do with our street. I think that we should listen to the people who live in the area and what they're asking to do, rather than someone who's presenting a plan that's not from the Churchill area. So please, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Terry Latch, to be followed by Jason Stinson. Welcome.
Hi. So first of all, I think it's pretty creative that people coming up and trying to come up with solutions and find a better solution, because property seizures and freeways on my street, because I live in Churchill, I'm married to that guy, they're not okay. Neither one of those things are okay. And I bought on a busy street, I've lived in Palo Alto Menlo Park my entire life, my family came here in the 60s. This is my home. I bought on a busy street, I get that. 20 years ago, I bought on Churchill, it's a busy street. I raised five kids there, lost a couple of cats, lost a couple lights on my car as people drove by and popped off the rearview mirror. But bottom line is, I didn't buy on a freeway, and I don't want to live on a freeway. And I appreciate everybody trying to find a solution so that a few people can save a few minutes on their drive in the morning or in the afternoon. But this is my home of 20 years. Please don't let me live on a freeway. Please don't spend $200 million for the ditch that goes nowhere. Alaska had the bridge, we'll have the ditch, we don't need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Stinson, to be followed by Jason Matloff. Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, so I kind of would reiterate some of the last few speakers. I think with the latest traffic study, it looks like the money that we have to spend on Embarcadero, the $50 million, is gonna make a massive difference on all the thorough fares there, including with the closure of Churchill. It's surprising to me that we're still evaluating other options that we know are gonna be at least in the tens, if not hundreds of millions of dollars, to keep Churchill open, when we have a solution that's relatively inexpensive, something we have to do regardless on the Embarcadero side. I don't understand why we're still looking at that, to create the access for a small community in the South Gate area. I also want to echo the fact, you know, I live on Churchill, we've also lost animals, my wife was broadsided exiting her car, exiting our driveway, she wasn't exiting the car, thankfully, moved the car sideways about 20 feet. Based on just general physics, the car was traveling probably about 50 miles an hour, there were no skid marks. This is just something that we deal with on Churchill. I think our big concern, as has been echoed by a number of other people on Churchill, is that it's going to, any of these options that keep Churchill open and create an easier path to get on and off Churchill are gonna turn it into a thoroughfare. And we're really concerned about that. So, that's it, thanks.
Thank you. Jason Matloff, to be followed by David Shenn.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to briefly talk about the closure plus traffic mitigation options that are an alternative to what is being discussed tonight, specifically because now we have, fortunately, the staff has directed ACOM to do a study on the traffic results, or the traffic analysis projected as a result of the traffic mitigations at Embarcadero and Oregon Expressway, which you can see here, at all the seven intersections that have been studied, show that they all would experience improvement in traffic on a net basis, even with the closure of Churchill. Five of seven of them, for example, in the morning would have A or B level of service, and two of them would have improvements, but not to that degree. So the significant, now we have objective data significantly confirming that just $50 million, a magnitude order less than the other proposals, will have a dramatic net positive improvement. If you can go to the next, I got it, the next slide. Which leads me to the last thing I want to say, and that is, the matrix that we still have, results from something from six months ago before we had any of this data, which is very now misleading. First of all, it's titled as closure, which is not accurate, because it's actually closure plus traffic mitigations. It shows that the actual work is just, the traffic will be no longer able to traverse Churchill, which is again, not true, because now we have traffic mitigations that will allow traffic to flow elsewhere. In row A, as you can see, it's showing as negative, which is orange, when in fact, now we have data that shows that it's positive, so it should be some color of blue. At the bottom also, I would point out, that none of the dollar amounts, which is probably the most significant thing, which no one has talked about tonight of any significance, is a magnitude order less for the Churchill closure plus mitigation. We should color that row, so that when we use this as a marketing tool to get out to the community and show them what the options are, that they see it in all of its correct data. So I would ask that you direct ACOM to please fix this slide, the matrix. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Shenn, to be followed by Stephen Rosenblum. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Dave Shenn, and a member of XCAP, and speaking today as a resident of Old Palo Alto. Just wanted to draw your attention to this matrix that is still up there. It was created a long time ago, with input from city council, residents, consultants, and staff. However, I want to urge council to begin an effort to update those comments and the contents of each box in the matrix, because we have new and updated information since this matrix was last touched. The example I was gonna use was the one that Jason Matloff had just brought up, which is that first row, when you move across to the Churchill closure box, it's colored a risky orange, it denotes impact, and it states that Churchill Avenue would just simply be closed to vehicles. But the information has updated since then. One of those is that the council has added to the closure option, the ability to consider all mitigation options. So it's not just about closure, but it's about closure and mitigations together. And then at XCAP, as Jason's mentioned, we spent a lot of time examining possible mitigations for traffic, bike, and pedestrians, and it's shown significant improvements when we talk about mitigations along with the closure. So given this updated information, just simply that box color should be different, and it should actually show favorable, more favorable blue towards improvement end in the spectrum. So it's my understanding that XCAP is not currently tasked with taking another pass through this information. So if that's true, then I would urge that city council find the time and resources to update each box in the matrix with new information that we've generated to date. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Stephen Rosenblum, to be followed by Mark Lawrence.
Good evening. This is my first opportunity to talk to council since the new mayor and vice mayor have been elected, so congratulations to Mayor Fine and Vice Mayor DuBois. I'm really troubled by the meeting tonight, I think we're really moving in the wrong direction. We can already see from the Churchill neighbors' presentations that the closure of Churchill is gonna provoke a lot of neighborhood against neighborhood conflict. Because if they want to close Churchill and save money, why don't we just close Meadow? You know, that'll save money too, we'll close all the streets. And then where's the traffic gonna go? And that's the main point. If we close one street out of the seven that cross the tracks, then all that traffic's gonna have to go on the other streets. And that's not just the under the tracks part, but it's Embarcadero, University, Oregon, they'll all have higher traffic levels. So I think we have to look at the equity situation, and I've been talking about that for a long time. We need to look at a solution that's Palo Alto-wide, where the pain and the benefits are shared by all the neighborhoods. And I think that's the viaduct. A viaduct with a view screen on the top that prevents people from the train from looking out the windows into neighbors' yards and cuts the noise. And I think council member Cormac, or member from the library bonds, when the benefits were, in one neighborhood, the bond could not get passed. When the benefits were spread over the city, then the bond got passed. And make no mistake, we're gonna need a bond issue for whatever solution we take on these grade crossings. So if we don't have the whole community on board with the solution, it isn't gonna happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Lawrence, to be followed by David Kennedy.
I believe we're talking about connecting Palo Alto, so why are we even talking about disconnecting Palo Alto? We have a problem that this railroad cuts our city in half, and we expect the increase in rail traffic to make that problem worse. So we don't want to make the problem even worse by closing one of the crossings that we do have. We've had some very noisy residents from South Gate asking you to close Churchill Avenue. I'll quote the last speaker, why don't we just close Embarcadero? I'm sure the people who live on Embarcadero would be happy at the reduction in traffic. The fact is, Churchill Avenue is an arterial, connects El Camino to Alma to Embarcadero. It's always been there. All you folks moved in next to a street that's always connected El Camino to Alma and Embarcadero. Okay, it looks like I'm almost out of time. We need more, not fewer, ways to get across town, so the only thing that should be taken off the table is closing one of the crossings we have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. David Kennedy, to be followed by Penny Ellison.
Good evening, David Kennedy, longtime resident of Palo Alto. Hate to say how many years. Since I only have two minutes, let me just make three points. Any railroad crossing closure is in opposition to the comprehensive plan, which I think we've been talking about already tonight. And the comprehensive plan talks about improving the connectivity. I'd encourage us to think of improving that connectivity at all crossings for all modes of transportation. Secondly, and I don't mean to take this lightly, but I think we have to be open and think about property acquisition differently. It may be that some property acquisition with good design could be reduced quite a bit, but it still may be the best solution going forward. Because when you have a little bit more property to work with, you can reduce your costs, you have construction areas to work with. Lastly, with a more open approach to property acquisition, I would urge the council to ask XCAP to add review of the Michael Price plan, and also to reintroduce looking at a hybrid at Churchill.
Thank you, sir. Penny Ellison, to be followed by Rob Levitsky.
Thank you, and thank you for listening to all of us this evening. I'm speaking as an individual. Let's see, I wanted to comment first of all about trade-offs. I appreciated the comments that Mr. Kami made earlier, and I heard him say that there's really no guarantee that the Alexis option will not require issue fly, but we don't really know that. And if it doesn't, and it can really save the kind of construction time that I think this option may have potential to save, I think this is really worth looking at a little further. So I hope we'll do that. Also, I've been troubled through this whole process by the options that are currently on the table, mainly because, as I listen to my South Palo Alto neighbors, and not just the people who live close to the tracks, but everybody, I'm not hearing consensus gelling around any of these. And that worries me, because I know we need it moving forward. I think that this idea may have the potential to give us an opportunity to get some more consensus than we have so far. So anyway, I hope you will consider looking into this just a little bit further. Thank you for listening to my comments. Good evening.
Thank you. Rob Levitsky, to be followed by Nelson Ng. And Mr. Levitsky, I believe you have a presentation.
Good evening, council. We've heard a lot of different opinions tonight. As you know, I'm a proponent of keeping Churchill open, because 9,500 cars a day cross the tracks. But I've been intrigued by Dave Price's proposal. And so, like my friend Mike, who did all the design work and videos, I went out Friday at rush hour, and this morning at rush hour, to do some measurements of traffic. And what you'll see here, this is one of the sheets, you'll see that the major activity in the morning, going north on Alma, is there's 255 people during the rush hour turn left to go across the tracks. And it queues up there, and it's made even worse if a train comes by and they have to reset the clock. So at Mike Price's thing, my analysis was, in looking at the different pathways, there's a few that get knocked out, and Keith pointed that out. You can't go straight across either direction on Churchill to cross the tracks, and you can't leave Churchill and try to go south on Alma. But if you look at some of the numbers here, what you'll see is that most of the traffic is handled by his design. And I emailed a copy of these to each of the council people to look at it. But the fact is, like in the morning, there were only 43 people who tried to cross from Churchill West to Churchill East, where also in the morning, 255 people were turning left. So the limitations of the Mike Price design seem to not be a big limitation, and I think it's worth exploring it further.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nelson Ng, to be followed by Susan Newman.
Good evening, city council. My name is Nelson Ng, and I live on Emerson, one block south of Embarcadero, which is the northmost block of O Palo Alto. So in the last 24 years, I have the front row seats of witnessing the continued deterioration of people using Embarcadero. At any given time, Embarcadero is either a parking lot or expressway. We do not need another Oregon Expressway. We do not want Embarcadero to turn into another Oregon Expressway. I'm very, therefore, I'm very concerned with closing Churchill and the so-called mitigation plan for Embarcadero. Looking at the plans, making it is so convoluted, and it will, and then adding additional traffic coming up from Alma is not acceptable for us in part of O Palo Alto as well. Another thing I want to also mention is that, one of the big things is that we should not just pit one neighborhood against each other, like a lot of people say. I am sympathetic for people who might potentially lose their home on Churchill, but at the same time, it should not come at the expense of other people in the neighborhoods that, who will suffer a lot more. So we should work together to come up with a solution that does not have to make this type of sacrifice for other people as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Newman, followed by Bob Moss. Susan Newman, followed by Bob Moss.
Hi. My comments aren't very well organized, but I kind of felt like I needed to stand up as a resident of South Gate to say, please don't close Churchill. Let's find a grade separation alternative that really works. As much as I sympathize with my passionate neighbors on Churchill and Mariposa, I don't think we can dismiss the 9,000 to 10,000 cars per day that are traveling between El Camino and Alma as something that Palo Alto shouldn't be concerned about. And a lot of the time, it's not during commuter traffic, and it's people in Palo Alto getting around. And I don't think we really talk about that very much. And I, you know, I feel it's unfair to dismiss the desire to maintain or increase connectivity within Palo Alto by grade separating the road and the tracks as just a few people selfishly wanting to shave a few minutes off their trips. So, ooh, sum up. As to the traffic study, I think there have been so many objections and concerns about it, that I hope the council will look very carefully. There have been some serious questions raised by residents of South Gate, residents of old Palo Alto. And we'll try to get those to you, and I hope you'll take a look at them and really think about whether the traffic study proves what it thinks it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Moss to be followed by Roland Lebrun.
Thank you, Mayor Fine, and council members. I have a little different topic. Meadow and Charleston. I think that the proposal to put an underpass under the railroad tracks and Alma and then have a traffic circle on the east side of the street at both Charleston and Meadow makes the most sense. I was dubious about it initially because of the cost, but then I looked at the various options, and the costs, and the performance, and I think it's worth spending the extra money. Because both of those streets are heavily used. Both of those streets are school streets, especially Meadow. And Meadow, of course, also serves a community center and a library. So, all things considered, I think we should be going with the underpasses at both of those streets. On Charleston, just one comment. Closing Charleston would have a real impact on traffic throughout North Palo Alto. On the way up here tonight, the left-hand lane of Alma was blocked for a block and a half with cars waiting to turn left onto Charleston. That's at 6:00 at night, not during rush hour. So if Charleston's been closed this evening, where would all those cars have gone? I don't think we should close Charleston. I think we have to work on some way of fixing the intersection. And I'm not going to suggest which way we should go right now, but I think it needs a lot more study.
Thank you. Roland Lebrun to be followed by Herb Borack.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and thank you for the opportunity. So let me start by echoing Elizabeth Alexis and applaud Michael Price's extraordinary Churchill presentation, which is vastly superior to anything AECOM ever produced, and most importantly, did not cost a dime to the Palo Alto taxpayers. Now, moving on to another alternative. As you know, one of the five alternatives allowed to go forward by the XCAP is a variation of the South Palo Alto Tunnel with freight at grade. This alternative was designed to be constructed entirely within the Caltrain rideaway, including the permanent shoe flyers for the freight. This in turn eliminates any impacts on the creeks, Alma, Meadow, or Charleston during the construction phase. In closing, I'm not asking for AECOM to study this alternative any further, but I would appreciate some indication or some direction from council to justify my reaching out to my industry contacts, who will be in town on February 11th for the Bart Industry Symposium in San Jose. If so, my objective would be twofold. First of all, verify that the design and the construction phasing are feasible. And second, that the cost estimates are indeed in the $250 to $300 billion range, and preferably less. Thank you.
Thank you. Herb Borack to be followed by our final speaker, Jim Silver.
Mayor Fine, council members, I'm not surprised that staff criticize AECOM. As I've reported in writing multiple times, AECOM has a conflict of interest because of their contracts with Caltrain and High Speed Rail. It's a bad idea to assume how many Caltrain passenger trains will be coming by per hour. They're currently operating at a $100 million deficit, and their 2040 vision is to operate at a deficit of multiple times that number. And in any case, the number of passengers they'll be bringing in in terms of employment will be a minor fraction of the employment growth that is wanted by land developers and the largest employers in Palo Alto, who are really the ones that benefit by any change in grade separations, and should be the ones who are paying for it. In fact, they should be the ones who'd be paying for this entire process by filing a planning application, paying for an environmental impact report that would study all these alternatives, and then the council would make a decision, at which point those companies and developers would pay for the entire thing. So I believe you should stop this process at this point. Now, if you continue to go ahead and try to get some bond measure that's paid for, say, by the number of employees each company has, you'll probably set a minimum number of employees, which is higher than the number of employees that Palo Alto Weekly has. Because you certainly wouldn't want them to be subject to the tax, since you would need their editorial support for any revenue generating measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jim Silver will be our final speaker. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Jim Silver. I live very close to the intersection at Meadow and Alma, so I have a strong interest in what happens there. I'll keep this brief. I think the Elizabeth Alexis proposal that we heard tonight is brilliant. I hope you guys will study it in detail. If there are, turn out to be some imperfections with it, I hope you will think as creatively as she's been thinking about, how do we get around those issues? I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that ends our public comment on this item. Thank you, everyone, for speaking and listening to your fellow citizens. Just a few quick things, then I want to bring it back to council. So first of all, at the back of the packet, there are a couple items which are upcoming for more public input. There's an XCAP meeting tomorrow. There's a word on the street, which is kind of mobile discussions about these topics coming up across town. And then we have three town halls planned for, well, two for February and one for March. So please check the city website for those. It's another great venue for input. Two, I wanted to just let my colleagues know how I think we should proceed, but open suggestions. I think it's preferable if we take these ideas one by one, I guess, starting in the same pattern we have, so Charleston and Meadow, Churchill and Embarcadero, and try to limit our discussion to each of those at a time, rather than going all over the place. And then if we have additional items about this grade separation process and the XCAP and other items we want to get to, let's get to that in the fourth area. But before doing that, I just wanted to ask staff if there's any responses, comments, ideas.
Perhaps less a response and a reaction, if I could, just on behalf of staff, and I'm sure on behalf of the council as well. One, acknowledging that this is a really difficult topic, and as the council has talked about this over the last several months and years, recognizing the importance of engaging the community. And so clearly, we have a highly engaged community. And while perhaps the breadth beyond the neighborhoods immediately affected by these grade separations continue to be areas to build on, certainly the involvement of residents that we've heard to this point is extraordinary. And really, to the point of can't overstate, wow, I mean, only in Palo Alto do you have residents not only, let's say, oppose something that's proposed, but that then go out and research, get into problem solving, do measurements on the street, model the street as it is, get into design, and animate alternatives in ways that, again, rival any professional presentation. So recognizing the context we're in, I do want to just note one dimension that hasn't really been touched on to this point is managing the uncertainty ahead. And I think Councilmember Phil Seth's question really touches on that. Recognizing that for projects such as this, major public works projects that involve multiple agencies and, in likelihood, hundreds of millions of dollars, that there's a multi-year process of scoping and of increasing detail that we are into. So we're in the beginning stages of that. And so as we proceed, ultimately, we, the city and staff, as your hands on the wheel, so to speak, will be in the uncomfortable position of balancing how to continue to understand and meet community expectations with the, we'll call it practitioner's perspective on the ability to deliver. And the ability to deliver on those expectations and handicapping the likelihood of gaining Caltrain's approval, as well as the other regulatory agencies that will be involved, with the, again, the handicapping the ability to deliver there with the time and, quite frankly, likely millions of dollars that will be spent in order to further flesh out various alternatives. So part of our recommendation was that, as the council were to settle on any or all of the alternatives that do move forward, that we have the opportunity to work with our consultants to come back with both a schedule and approach and work plan, recommendations on how to tackle the next steps, with a recognition to, again, this process that we're in that will involve review by others and further evaluation beyond the engineering themselves, the handicapping of the timeliness of decision-making, and the steps going forward. So that comment.
Thank you. And could you just remind us briefly of the cost estimates in terms of dollars and time in terms of accepting one of these new ideas for further study?
Yeah, so the cost estimate right now, which is for the engineering alone, not factoring in the community outreach, et cetera, that we would also want to make sure that we do, is around $65,000 for each. But we're anticipating that that cost will be higher once you factor in every aspect that we will need to do for the alternatives. And in terms of time, we have to work more closely with the consultant. The worst-case scenario can be up to four months, but we don't think that that would be the case for everything.
Okay, thank you. So I want to open it up to my colleagues, and just a reminder, let's start with a discussion of the Charleston and Meadow options. Then we'll go on to Churchill, and finally, Embarcadero. And I see a light from Councilmember Niss.
So let me start out by going backward, because I was reminding Nadia the other day that she and the CARD women, I've forgotten what CARD even means now, were in my living room about 10 years ago, when this first became a big discussion point. And it was fascinating then, and it continues to be fascinating. I would like to speak particularly in favor of the first plan, the one by Elizabeth Alexis also, who has been involved with CARD for that long period of time. And I think I would really recommend us going forward with the Charleston-Meadow proposal, because I can actually see that. It's the one that I could see happening. And I also admire that you both found the Italian version of it, which was fascinating, and that you also showed other aspects of it. And I think one of those was a box of some kind, and I'm not saying that quite clearly, but the box that you depicted that allowed you to not have certain other aspects of this come into play. So I don't, a motion, the mayor said. Oh, so let me move approval for the first recommendation, the one by Elizabeth Alexis. Do I need to quote a price, or can we simply just say move forward on that particular one?
I think let's just say move forward on individual ideas, and then we can queue things up towards the end.
And I'll hold it to that one right now, because I'd like us to have a discussion of the other two.
Thank you. So Councilmember Niss has made a motion that we move forward with the first idea for Charleston and Meadow, seconded by Councilmember Cormac. Do you want to speak to your motion?
I think I've spoken to it.
Thank you.
All we need now is four votes.
Councilmember Cormac.
I'm grateful to Ms. Alexis for her continued work on this. Two questions about this. I am supportive of us considering it because of something we haven't talked a lot about tonight. I just want to emphasize what Mr. Rektall said earlier, which is, the things we're looking at tonight are fixing major flaws that we have observed over time, and they're attempting to not move the railroad, which seems in retrospect to be possibly a good idea. But two questions. One is, Mr. Kami, I don't know if you're prepared to discuss this tonight, but the light at Charleston looks like really wide. Is that like really one light, or seems like it's a lot of movements to be managing there? Anyway.
Sir, I'm sorry, are you talking about the drawing of the light in the arch?
I'm saying there's one stoplight, one light at the intersection. Imagine, just imagining how large that is, that that's going to be feasible, just one? Because I wondered.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay, well, we'll look into that. And then the main concern I have with this is Meadow. Okay, so we've talked a lot about Charleston, and it's one thing to envision this working at Charleston. Meadow, we have a lot less space. So my concern about this proposal is, even if it works at Charleston, is I don't know what we're going to do at Meadow. And I don't know, we've always, we've been operating under the assumption that whatever we do at one, we do at the other. So that's the concern, that's the biggest concern I have about this proposal going forward. I do think it's worth considering.
Just give me a moment to collect my thoughts quickly. Next on the board, I had Councilmember Dubois, Vice Mayor, I'm sorry.
So I really think we should call this the Italian roundabout. I think that's a catchy name. So I'll be supporting the motion. And this is, again, a high-level concept, so I think just to throw out some ideas as we kind of dig into this a little bit. I think I'd really like to see what differing number of lanes would look like. So like particularly like Charleston, if it was two lanes in each direction versus one in each direction. You know, Meadow, I think maybe is more suitable for one lane in each direction. And then if we can look at different locations for the roundabout itself, I think wherever there's the most space, mid-block or at intersection with a street. And then on the bike path stuff, I think keeping the bikes on one side for a while could potentially create that space we need for the roundabout. And then, you know, looking at whether it should just cross over at the existing bike path, which I think is that Wilkie Way. You know, and I think something Councilmember Cormac said, I've been thinking about Meadow, and I'm wondering if we could, we should consider restrictions to large trucks on some of these streets. I think that may exist, I'm not sure, but when it comes back, like Churchill and Meadow, you know, I think truck traffic could be directed to the larger streets. So that's my thoughts on that. I actually want to go back, and I just want to say, I appreciate the work that XCAP is doing, coming up with these ideas. Like you said, I don't think any of us were thrilled with kind of the existing options. And I'm really encouraged, and I appreciate kind of getting some of these new ideas. And I'm also really pleased to see the amount of community that's here tonight. We've had a few row meetings where there weren't very many people here. So it's good. I think word is getting out. I do wonder if we could hire Mr. Chacon and save some money on rendering costs. That was awesome. And I also want to say, I just appreciate the filter. I think the XCAP applied on these new ideas. You didn't come back with a billion-dollar idea. I think you filtered based on being cost-effective, and I think that's something we all appreciate. And so I do hope that staff and our consultant will take these as just kind of nuggets of ideas and see how we can make them work, what we would need to change if there are some issues that come up as we dig into them. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Phil Seth. Councilmember Phil Seth.
Thank you. So it seems to me the big upside of the Alexis design is that, yeah, the promise that you might be able to do it without touching the train tracks, and there's a lot of value in there if that could be done. So I guess the question, I mean, I actually sort of read this option, it's basically a simple underpass with kind of this funky structure to allow access to westbound Charleston or Meadow, right? As opposed to sort of conventional stuff, right? So I guess the questions that you wonder about on this are, and Philip mentioned a couple of these, right? Which is, one, can it actually be done without moving the tracks and the shoe fly, including sort of the whole Jackbox thing and so forth? Another one is, will the roundabout actually fit, right? And then both Charleston or Meadow, well, it's conceivable you could do a hybrid on one and this on the other one, right? Will it in fact save a lot of money relative to the hybrid, right? And then finally, you know, is this realistic, or is the whole thing going to be a giant kludge, right? And so I guess my question to staff is, if we go spend $65,000 and take up four months on this, are we going to know the answers to those questions?
Quite frankly, we may not, because the question, fundamental question, I think that, as you pointed out, is if it were opposed to Caltrain, what would it take to not have to do a shoe fly? You know, what are the options? That, based on our consultants' experience elsewhere, that decision is typically made much further down the design path and requires everything from geotechnical to operational to their own modeling and in the decision-making. So I think this poses a challenge to us to see how much clarity and what response we can get now, and again, as I mentioned earlier, handicap, how to take a response today versus what will it take to get to a level of certainty that the city of Palo Alto can and should invest more money on the alternative.
That's sort of what I was, it was sort of thinking about, but although, maybe clarify something for me. I mean, I would have guessed that if you're not going to move the tracks, then Caltrain probably isn't going to worry too much about it one way or the other, but it sounds like that might not be correct.
Just based on the early discussions of the concept, it's a question of what level of assurance Caltrain will feel is necessary that, let's say, whether it's boring or jacking under the tracks would not put their line at risk.
Right.
You know, an operating, everyday line. So what would it take to allow construction to occur under the operating rail?
While the train operates and so forth. So is that the kind of thing that, I mean, that seems to me another fundamental question of this. So is that the kind of thing that we might be able to get some insight into if we took, you know, three, four months and did this?
I think it's certainly something we will explore, and again, depending on the response, need to come back to the council and give you an assessment of risk versus reward in the exploration.
Okay, I understand, that's helpful. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Koo.
So actually, Councilmember DuBois and Phil Seth has asked most of my questions and also brought up a lot of points. I think most importantly is that the tracks, you know, after, the tracks I thought would not move, but that's something for exploration. But also, the creeks are not going to be involved in this as well, which has been an impediment towards the tunnel and also to the trench. But most importantly is the safety factor, where the bicycles and the pedestrians are separated from cars. And so it's a very, very meaningful plan. And I just want to say, you know, to the community, it's an incredible community, and I thank the XCAP for seeking out everybody and bringing them together to come up with this. Something that Keith had said, you know, that a 10-year study is not sufficient, and projects should have a longer time. And I feel that with this, it will provide it a longer time. But also, I think that the XCAP needs to be supported with their plans. So Mr. Chacon has done a beautiful work with his renderings, but like to see that, you know, as much as I love your drawings, Nadia, I mean, they're one of a kind, but I think that it's time that we support, you know, the renderings for Alexis Plan for both Charleston as well as Meadow, because it would be much more helpful for us to be able to see that. So thank you again, and I'll be supporting this.
Thank you. So it does sound like there's support for this in the council, so I'll try to be brief with some of my comments. When I looked this over, I think, Mr. Rechdal, you did have a good point, that once you embrace the constant flow concept, this makes some sense. I do have questions about whether people can embrace that constant flow concept, and it's just a few thoughts on that. So one, you know, this is moving crossing, turning movements out of essentially the grade separation area and putting them through a roundabout, you know, 100 yards, 200 yards, whatever it is, away. And that simplifies certain parameters of the design, but it complicates other traffic movements. And I think the brief AECOM, you know, red team analysis of this and staff's response says it does create some more circuitous routes, and it may add, you know, traffic impacts to some neighboring streets, so let's not lose sight of that. Some people are calling it, you know, the Italian roundabout. It's made me think of like a New Jersey left or a jug handle, right? And I don't think we'd like to call much in Palo Alto a New Jersey thing. One thing I do wonder about, and this is more philosophical than actually tactical, is how do we forecast driver behavior on something like this? You know, will Palo Altons and visitors be able to drive into, you know, South Palo Alto on Alma and understand what to do here? And I do have some questions about that, and I hope the analysis can take some look at that about best practices there, or how you might approach that for folks who have not experienced this before. Just to be clear, there is no, on Charleston, there is no bike lane on the south side. Is that correct?
Yes, on this concept, correct. There's no bike lane, there's a bike lane on the south side up until you get to, on the west side, but not on the east side.
Okay.
And then it's the reverse, it's a mirror image on Meadow.
Yep, okay. And then to Councilmember Phil Seth's point, I think we really need to sharpen our pencil on how this may or may not affect the tracks, right? Whether they're lifted, whether there's a shoe fly, any shift in there, I think, could be a knock against this plan, and we should try to uncover that as early as possible. Just want to note, staff also mentioned construction impacts could be significant, more street traffic in local neighborhoods, the number of lanes needs some explanation, but to Councilmember Koo's point, if we have more accurate drawings and detailed design engineering, maybe that begins to answer it, as well as the property impacts. Was I under the wrong impression that staff or AECOM thought this is more functional at Charleston than Meadow? Is that a fair assumption that it's less viable at Meadow, or is there no evaluation?
So AECOM only looked at Charleston for the analysis. Which is, yeah, which is wider.
Okay. And the XCAP is proposing it for both Charleston and Meadow.
Yeah, I mean, the proposal is that it's a concept, and the concept needs to be flushed out. I would concede that it's, there's a little bit more room at Charleston, and the impacts are different because all of the houses along Charleston face into the circles. At Meadow, it's a different situation, and it's why it needs help. I did want to make one important point, though, about the, it's the jacked box, by the way, Councilmember Liz. Caltrain has built roundabouts, I mean, has built grade separations over the last year out of necessity. They now have to build 41, so frankly, Caltrain will be just as interested as anybody to learn a way that you might be able to build more of these without having to move the tracks. This could potentially be something that Mountain View and Sunnyvale and other neighboring cities decide is an issue. And that's exactly what happened with the Long Island Railroad. They did, I believe it was 12 grade separations, they've done them in over two years. Each one, they got better. It did require a weekend shutdown, but, and so to your point, it needs work, but I would like to just say that it's work that Caltrain would also be incented to look into, because we're not the only ones who have to build these over the next.
Thank you. So just to be clear, this motion includes exploring the idea for both Charleston and Meadow. Is staff considering that a task, like one task to AECOM, two tasks? Not sure.
We would have to follow up on that.
Okay, just hollering that to my colleagues, that we are, you know, potentially adding two new alternatives. A year or two ago, we started with 38, something like that. We're today at seven and maybe a prime option, and, you know, we're potentially adding two right now. So just as we think about our process, let's please keep that in mind.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'm sorry, perhaps we didn't understand your question. I think for the purpose of discussion, we would consider this one additional alternative that will work with AECOM to flesh out the work plan to address.
For both geometries.
Yes.
Well, sorry, now we want to get going, but I just want two quick comments. First of all, I don't think the shoe fly is the sole reason to consider this option. I just want to, even if it required a shoe fly, it has the benefit of minimizing the visual changes by not going up the way the hybrid goes up, and also potentially has less noise, because again, it's not elevated. So I just wanted to get that out there. And when you say it's only one option, again, the geometries are different on Meadow and Charleston, so, I mean, hopefully there's enough analysis so we can understand that. Because again, overall, we've spent very little time on Meadow and Charleston, and I think we need to spend some more time on these.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. All right, so let's vote on this one, and then we can come back and circle with them all at the end. So if you support this motion, please vote green on the board. There you go. And that passes seven to nothing. Thank you all very much.
Also, perhaps before we go too much farther, just a confirmation that our understanding or interpretation of the vote you just took is that we'll work with AECOM to flesh out the work plan to incorporate this. It may or may not require the full-scale animations and renderings that have previously been done for others, but I think we'll work with the XCAP on stepping into that in ways that are addressing the questions that have been raised.
Understood. I think that's what we intended as well.
Please involve Elizabeth, who jumped it up. Sometimes, sometimes members come to us and we don't acknowledge later the wonderful plans that they had, because she seems to have a vision, and it would be great if she worked along with AECOM.
Thank you, Councilmember Niss. Okay, just a quick time check, it's 9:20. This item was scheduled to end at 8:45, as usual on rail, it's a slow train running. So...
But at least it left the station first.
There we go. At 10 o'clock, I'm just going to ask us all what we want to do with our next two items. We still have a housing work plan, which I do know some folks here are for, and then we have an item on audit practices, which we may or may not get to. So at 10 o'clock, I'm going to ask us all to quickly chime in on that. So for the next item, it's the Churchill intersection, Mr. Price's idea. I'm just going to kick this one off, because I have an opinion on it. So I do have some questions about T-intersections and bicycle safety, but I think as the XCAP noted, those are issues that have been solved previously. And also say, I think, as I thought about these over the weekend, at Charleston and Meadow, I actually kind of felt we had functional viable options, and so, you know, with due respect to the last idea, we just added that there were opportunities and options that we could maybe move forward with. At Churchill, I think we've run into a little bit of a dead end, or closure, to use a phrase. And so this is one where I think it's definitely worth us exploring more. I'm not endorsing it, I'm not saying this is going to work, but I think it's worth getting a few more cards on the table. I do have questions about the T-intersections, bike safety. Are the roads on either side roughly considered like frontage or through roads? Is that a correct understanding, that could be one lanes or two lanes, it's just, I'm not going underneath the tunnel, I'm not turning, I'm literally just going north or southbound on Alma?
Yes, that was our understanding. Also, I think Mike Price's original idea had a single lane that stayed at grade, and what AECOM said is that it might need to be two.
Might be two, and then you'll have one left turn lane.
Exactly.
Underneath the tracks. Okay, thank you. Would this lane, this, sorry, intersection depression, would allow trucks? Do we have any information, maybe, maybe not, on Alma?
Yeah, so, yeah, the AECOM looked at, you know, both the PAUSD buses and trucks that would necessitate room to accommodate the turning movements.
Okay, thank you. So I'm supportive of this one, and all move, adoption of this idea. Thank you, Councilmember Niss. I think the main thing here is that it provides a potential hybrid option where we're preserving the most intensive and quote-unquote "important" traffic movements, while also removing some that are less used, and that provides a little more flexibility in terms of limiting potential property takings or preserving bicycle pedestrian traffic, and I think that's important to explore. It's definitely unique, it's different. Mr. Chacon and Mr. Price, thank you for the illustrations. I think they're really helpful for the community to envision this. They may shift over time as we look at this idea further, but I certainly think it's worth getting a few more cards on the table. So that's a motion by myself, seconded by Councilmember Niss, and Councilmember Niss, if you want to speak to it.
So with all apologies, I'm not quite as enthusiastic about this one, and for a very simple reason. I can't see this one, and even though you presented it well, and there were excellent depictions and even an animation, I can't quite imagine it yet. So I think this is worth having somebody take a look at. I would encourage us to stay with the animations. With Elizabeth Alexis's, that would help as well, to have that animated so that we could see that happening. But I'll be interesting, interested to see what happens with the Price Plan, which seems to me like it's a more complicated one, but as the mayor referenced, it has some real potential.
Thank you, Councilmember Niss. So to the clerk, the motion is to move forward with the Churchill option by Mr. Price. Maybe we'll be labeled the Price Plan in time.
Who's the Price Plan?
Price Plan. I saw a light from Councilmember Phil Seth first.
So a quick question to staff. You know, part of the motivation for considering something other than the closure of Churchill is the impact on Embarkadero. Staff's feeling that irrespective of what we do with Churchill, we're going to need some sort of significant reconstruction of the Embarkadero underpass in the next 20 or 30 years anyway? Are we going to have to do that no matter what we do at Churchill?
I don't think we've reached that conclusion. You know, I think there've been some discussions at some point that the bridge over Embarkadero for Alma will need some work.
I've heard that, yeah.
As bridges eventually do. But again, not to the point of having determined that work is necessary in any case.
Build a giant traffic circle there or something like that, yeah. Okay.
Certainly not a foregone conclusion at this point.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Fine. This is, I'm very familiar with this intersection. I do definitely appreciate the visualizations. I think it's a clever way to mitigate the concerns that some people have had so far. I remain concerned about, you know, AECOM's assessment that it will introduce more traffic on residential streets. I can certainly envision that there's a street that people aren't here from, right? So let's just say Melville, for example, right? I can imagine, you know, depending on where this is, people come, you know, east on Churchill, they turn left on Alma, then they're going to turn right on Melville, because they're still trying to get over faster. So I fear there may be unintended consequences of this we haven't sort of worked through yet. I definitely worry, and I appreciate AECOM's attention to the, you know, the wall that's created and can you turn left in advance? People go pretty quickly on Alma, and that part makes me nervous, so there's not a lot of room there to separate those lanes of traffic. I think it's worth looking into, could be a little bit of scope creep. I heard Mr. Rechdal mention a potential movement of where the bike pedestrian crossing would be, so I know that that's been a discussion and gone round and round multiple times. Yeah, and where all the lights are, it looks like that could be a little bit tricky, so conceptually promising, but this one, I think, in terms of implementation, that's not a lot of space down, you know, underneath to make everything work. So willing to go a little further? So willing to go a little further, not sure how much further after that. It's going to depend on, you know, what the results are.
Thank you, Vice Mayor DeBoise.
Yeah, so I thought this was an interesting concept. I do want to say, I liked the idea of the two lanes on Alma being depressed, and that was basically constant flow without a light. I thought it had the benefit of the single lane of Alma that was up high, turning into almost a more residential street. It would really be, you would go up there if you were making local turns. So I thought that was a really nice benefit. So I understand, you know, the concern about the decision point there, but I'd love to see maybe some other ways to make that clear instead of having two lanes up, including a through lane, which will keep maybe, you know, faster Alma traffic up at the residential level. I was a little bit concerned about the T intersection for the bikes crossing, and there is a lot of bunching there, and you would potentially have a lot of bunching on a bridge over the tracks, which could be a safety issue. So I do think it's worth considering the SEAL crossing and actually just taking the bikes away from there entirely, and it is something we've talked about. And I did hear concern, you know, tonight about potentially increasing traffic on Churchill. I was a little surprised. I mean, to me, when I was looking at this, it seemed like the pattern, there would be a light, and there would be a potential turn from Alma to Churchill. It seemed like the experience would be the same as it is today. So I think, you know, we should understand if, you know, there would be a potential for increased traffic, or we would expect it to be basically the same as it is. So thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Ku.
So Councilmember, I mean, Vice Mayor DeBoise just brought up the potential for a bike pedestrian bridge on SEAL. I was wondering, you know, I mean, oftentimes, we're looking at all these kind of planning in a segmented way, and I was wondering, is it possible to kind of look at all of this as comprehensively? So we also look at connectivity on SEAL, but also on Kellogg, where there's a bicycle pedestrian bridge or something where it can move bikes and pets off of Churchill, or give another way for a safer route. Is that possible to add into this whole discussion?
So we can look at other alternatives for crossing. I think to Keith's point, I think was, and correct me if I'm wrong, but to look for a temporary solution so that there's not no crossing during construction.
See there again? In 2014, the council had the rail corridor study, where you, the group actually identified places where you could have east-west connectivity. And among those, in that report, there's actually several locations. They basically measured how many east-west points you have for cars and bikes, and had identified new locations for bike-ped crossings. So among those was one in the area of Loma Verde, another one was actually at SEAL and Pierce Park. I believe there was also one at Kellogg, but I'd have to go back and look at the report. So this has actually been something that has been brought forth before. I don't know how it fits into the bike-ped plan from 2012. I don't recall seeing that there, but that certainly wasn't the 2014 report. It's part of the reason it was discussed. The other thing that was brought up at XCAP, in the closure of Churchill, we're looking at two different bike-ped potential crossings. One is a similar, they cross across the street and go down the bike-ped tunnel like Mike Price's idea. The other is an option in the middle of Churchill that is a depressed bike-ped tunnel that allows the kids to go under, by kids and adults, anyone to go under, and have a more constant flow. And so there was discussion about how that doesn't force the bikes to gather and then, you know, makes, because you have this requirement, if you have too many bikes gathering, you have to make the tunnel much wider. So we haven't quite gotten to that in deliberations, but to answer your question, it was considered in the 2014, it was part of the 2014 rail corridor study.
And I know Councilmember Cormac had spoken about scope creep, creep, but I think it's important to kind of look at everything as a whole and see where are the connectivities, and not have everything bunched up at Churchill or somewhere else. There should more, be more of these east-west connections. So if that's something that we can add into, be appreciative.
What would the amendment be?
Just to add in exploration of the report from 2014 for east-west connections on SEAL to Pierce Park and on Kellogg.
So can staff just update us on where those actually stand? I mean, I know part of the discussion at Churchill has been if, you know, we do a closure, a bike lane is almost a necessity, and that could be at Churchill, it could be at SEAL or another street. How are you all considering some of this bicycle connectivity?
Could you see why it's at SEAL?
So-
It makes sense.
I think that the entire bike and ped plan is due for an update, and I think that would be the appropriate place to talk about, you know, more broad bike and ped connections. Not necessarily within this process, not that we shouldn't consider it within this process, but I think you want to consider it holistically for the whole city under that type of bike and ped plan. And as Nadia mentioned, the bike and ped plan that we currently have is from 2012, and so it's due for an update.
Okay.
When do you expect to have that come back, or for us to hear the update?
I can't tell you that right now, but I believe within a year or so.
Within a year?
Yeah, yeah, to get it started, yes, within a year.
Well, I just, I just want to make sure that this, this plan is kept together and considered when you're discussing the, with the XCAP and the rail. It is a connectivity matter.
If I could just clarify, from XCAP's perspective, the only Churchill closure options, there was at one point discussion of a crossing at SEAL that was eventually removed, and we didn't really, we were never really explained why. We were then presented with, here are the two options only at Churchill. So if that's something that the-
So originally, SEAL to Pierce Park was part of the discussion?
Was part of the closure, and then it was removed. And I honestly don't remember why. I don't know, staff.
I recall it slightly differently. We should go back and check. Can we just have staff update us on-
Yes, please.
-some of the bike connectivity issues with Churchill?
Yeah, I just don't want to forget about that, because these are all important connections. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other lights, so in the interest of moving along, if you would please vote on the board. Thank you. That passes seven to nothing, so we've added one more alternative, Mr. Price's idea. Two more little sections I'm hoping we can get through. One is, what's it called, rethinking Embarcadero, and then any other comments, questions, whatever, motions on the process in general. I see a light from Councilmember Niss.
Well, after we've been so enthusiastic about the first, the first two, at least especially the first one, I think that I, for one, am not ready to rethink Embarcadero at this point. I think this one becomes more complicated. Looking at the page that deals with the potential weaknesses, as they said, the cost could be significant due to construction phasing and a need for a shoe fly, well, maybe there's something other than that, but it's been a concern tonight. The construction phasing and impacts could be a fatal flaw, which certainly could be the case probably in any of them, but the real ringer on this is might not be eligible for Measure B funding. And I think that that's probably the most, of the most concern to me. So my motion is that we not rethink Embarcadero at this time.
Thank you. So Councilmember Niss has moved that we not accept the idea of rethinking Embarcadero, and that's been seconded by Councilmember Phil Seth. Would you like to speak to your motion?
I think, maybe I'll speak it a little backwards, because I'm very enthused about A, and I'm quite enthused about B. And maybe it's simply a lack of enthusiasm at this point, but this, once again, looks far more complicated, and it also looks as though it has many more built-in glitches than the other two did. I am, I'm looking at page 174, packet page 174 and 175, and looking at a variety of different comments that they make, and also looking at the, do we, do we have this in a slide form that we could throw up on the board? This is page 173, if that's possible. Again, packet page 173.
Slide 36.
Right, I just want to show the roundabout, which is on page 173. So if you take a look at that, that to me, although sometime in the future, this might be a very appealing and even practical solution, I don't think we're there yet. And I think this demonstrates it visually, and, including the Dutch roundabout and the viaduct. So for all those reasons, as they should say on Shark Tank, I'm out. I have grandchildren.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yeah, I think, well, part of this, there's an issue, I mean, so first of all, this, it's really elegant, but it's also very aspirational in terms of building viaducts and raising stuff and so forth. But I think there's also an element of sequencing in here, which is, I think that the staff recommendation for if we need to, we don't need, we don't know that we're going to need to reconfigure Embarcadero. If we need to reconfigure Embarcadero, I think the staff's approach, right, appears to be workable, right? And we still don't know if we're going to need to do it or not, right? I mean, if we choose the Mike Price alternative, then we don't need to do it, right? So I think that, I think we're going to have our plate full with, you know, the two things that we just approved in the existing XCAP. And if, down the road, we should decide that, let's say for the sake of argument, we decide to close Churchill, and therefore we are going to need to do some work on Embarcadero, if down the road, we decide that, oh, the staff approach looks much more problematic than anybody saw, I think we'll have opportunities to come back and revisit it, as somebody pointed out here. But I think at this time, the right thing to do is focus on the South Palo Alto, really the South Palo Alto first, and then I think we've got some time on the Churchill thing, which is why I think it's reasonable we could take a look at it. And that's where we ought to focus from a practical perspective.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor, and if you would first speak to that, I've got lights in a few order, and then we can edit it, whatever. Councilmember Ku.
Sorry. I'm looking at the diagram at one, packet page 171. So that bridge, I remember the prior, the former transportation official had mentioned that the Alma Bridge overpass is coming to the end of its life and needs to be revisited, right? So, and I understand it's a historical bridge. Is it a historic-
So I do not believe it has been officially designated as a historic bridge, and I don't know that it's coming to the end of its life. I don't know that we know that at this point.
So we don't really know if it's coming to the end of its life, if we'd need to seismically-
Yeah, if it's going to need any type of upgrades-
Any work at all.
-or any work, I would say we don't know that at this time, but also it has not been, as far as we know, officially designated as a historic bridge. It might be eligible.
How would, would that be part of the scope to find out if it's eligible? I mean, if it is a historical or eligible for that?
The- Yeah.
Because the reason I ask is because is there money, grants that we can apply for if it is a historic bridge in order to do retrofits on it, and perhaps make that merging lane a little bit wider so it's no, it doesn't become a bottleneck over there?
Possibly.
Okay. Okay, well, in terms of Embarcadero, since we're talking about that, the safety features for bikes and pets that were previously talked about, I don't know, some years ago, for the Emerson and the Kingsley area, as well as for the El Camino, does that factor into the fact that there is possibility of relieving traffic congestion and also safety for bicycle riders and pedestrians?
Yeah, I'm sorry, but I don't, I don't follow your question exactly.
Since we're talking about Embarcadero right now, I wanted to know, you know, in order to relieve congestion and take and remove pedestrians and bicyclists away from being, there is a plan, my understanding is from sometime, some years ago, where there is retrofits and there's some manner of doing, separating or providing pedestrians and bicyclists a safer route going to Gunn, as well as to the Town and Country. And since there's always bottlenecks over there from the traffic light that is at Town and Country, is that going to be implemented anytime soon in order to further relieve traffic on Embarcadero?
So-
Is that part of-
Yes, there are plans for that, but I think that those-
Is it part of the rail plan?
Yeah, so it's being, the rail plan is considering, or considering other, you know, mitigations or other options for bike plan and pedestrian access.
And is that something that has, that you're revealing at this time, as part of this plan?
Yeah, so the bike and ped access is definitely an aspect of all of the plans and all of the considerations.
And it is being discussed at the Rail Committee, at the XCAP?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor DeBoise.
So I think I share the concerns of the makers about the costs and the construction impacts of the, of the large roundabout idea. But I do believe that Churchill and Barcadero, you know, are related, work together. A lot of people have thrown out this idea of doing some testing of a closure of Churchill, excuse me, and I think tonight, there was the idea of maybe extending the number of hours of no-through traffic. I mean, would the staff think about, what's their reaction to that idea if we were to consider closing Churchill?
Yeah, I think that the concept of phasing into a Churchill closure is something that we've kicked around informally quite a bit, so we're probably at the time to want to bring forward, at least for discussion, certainly with council and perhaps the XCAP to its extent that it's on point, that we flesh out some options. And, you know, things, or approaches such as, would you test the closure of Churchill today? And I would argue, no, because in the absence of the access that's currently provided by Churchill, both automobile, as well as pedestrian and bicycle, traffic need a way to get across. So the question then might be, would we consider doing some form of modification at Embarcadero first, then test the closure at Churchill? And so what would the sequence and the time involved with those kinds of steps be? As well as, there's also been some discussion of, at what point in increasing train traffic would Churchill effectively be closed, and what would that scenario look like? And so I think that that's a, lack of a better term, an exercise that working with the AECom staff would be worth putting together some options so that people could start to visualize over time how, whether it's a closure or just any other type of modifications or mitigations done in that area could be sequenced in order to ensure that access and safety is maintained, and avoid, you know, any unbearable circumstance, whether it be from a traffic congestion or a safety perspective.
Okay, yeah, that made a lot of sense. And so right now, do we, what is the current plan of record for Barcadero? Like, I mean, the Hexagon Report had some suggestions. Are we basically saying we're going to make no changes?
No, I think that, to your question and Councilmember Ku, the prior plan that included modifications- included modifications for bikes effectively along Embarcadero all the way to El Camino Real, much of it is retained in the concept that is shown on that packet page 171. The one that is a question mark is the El Camino Real itself. And what would happen there, there is a separated bike and pedestrian crossings that are part of that previously approved plan that would conflict with the idea of adding a second left turn and some of the other modifications that Hexagon has talked about. So that one in particular does require further examination in order to identify how to sequence and or, how those pieces fit together. But the other bike route changes along Embarcadero itself, I think in many cases can proceed. So I think it's just a question of how best to do that and what timeframe, depending on the decision making that's happening here.
So again, if the makers could pay attention here, I think, so if I hear what you're saying, are you saying that changes to Barcadero would be phased in based on decisions with grade crossings? Like, there were some things in the Hexagon report about road realignment and some traffic lights. That would all wait to decide if we're going to close Churchill or not?
Let's see, no, it could. I'm not suggesting that it needs to. There were some modifications proposed at Emerson and at High, add Embarcadero, that again, could proceed today. But again, depending on what the likely decision is, may or may not make sense to proceed with right away if there are some near-term modifications that will be made based on either the plan shown on page 171 or any other direction from the council.
Okay.
So I think staff needs to, again, get back to, with the team, to propose some options for how that fits into sequencing going forward.
So voting for this amendment, which was no change, I forget what it's called, not rethinking Embarcadero, that's not, that's really not saying, don't do anything to Embarcadero.
Right, I think it enables us to get more short-term.
I just want to make sure...
The triple negative?
Yes. So I just want to make sure we're all clear. We're saying no to the big roundabout, but we are saying, we are going to consider some other...
This is the title here.
Yes.
We're saying, don't direct AECOM to go do a lot of work on the Carrasco alternative.
So I guess my question is, we want to be clear that we do want to consider some improvements to Barcadero. And I could see those being phased, as the city manager suggested. There's the bike and the signal timing, and then there's potentially road realignment and some new stoplights and other changes. I'd kind of like to see that continue, and then I think some of it would be triggered based on the decision at Churchill.
Well, I think, I think what I seconded was very narrow, which was not to sign the X cap to go do a consulting study on option number three here.
Okay. So I do think...
Don't do so, in other words. Don't take this up right now.
Don't spend $65,000 in four months looking at this.
So I'm in agreement with that. I just do want staff to think about impacts to Barcadero. And I think if we are looking at the closed Churchill option, that means some of these Embarcadero changes need to come. Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Cormac.
I want to express my appreciation to Mr. Carrasco for his vision, and apologies, we haven't done that yet. I want to associate myself primarily with the comments that Councilmember Phil Seth made earlier, as the reasons I will be supporting the motion and not moving forward with this particular idea at this point in time. I'll say that the biggest flaw I saw, and then it was borne out in the AECOM staff report is, I don't think this is very navigable for people who are walking and on bicycles. These are two major, major, you know, thoroughfares, and the speed of traffic, I can imagine, would be pretty constant. It isn't separated for people to get through. A lot of kids are riding their bikes back and forth to Paly. That seemed like a very big problem to me. Thank you.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, I also want to thank Tony for coming up with this idea. I was wondering if the mayor could let Tony just speak a few words, because I, I've heard, the other two ideas got a lot of airtime, but we haven't really heard too much on this. I don't know if Tony would be willing to come and just say a few words on kind of the motivation behind this and your thought process.
Mr. Carrasco, you're absolutely welcome to.
So I agree with AECOM's comments. It's complicated and it's disruptive, the full one. We had also looked at a hybrid, which kept the bridges and added a couple of additional roads, which is much less expensive. So if we can move it forward a little bit with the hybrid, not demolishing bridges and leaving the traffic as they, as it is, it should work, but up to you. We came at this from a very different perspective than AECOM does or normal traffic consultants. We came at it from what's Palo Alto, what's Palo Alto's DNA? Sort of the baylands, the foothills, landscaping, a pleasant place to drive through. And it might have gone a little too far on costs, but there are other ways to decrease those costs and not transform it that much.
Yeah, you know, I think Embarcadero is kind of a interesting situation, because I think one of the speakers, I forgot who it was, came up and said that it's either a parking lot or a freeway or something to that effect. And I think I've heard that from other people as well. And, you know, this, even from my days on the planning commission, we know about the Embarcadero Town and Country, Paly, like jam that happens, right? So there's just a lot of unhappiness here, right? There's a lot of kind of issues. And I know, like, for myself, when I usually bike or rock, when I try to go, try to cross this area, it's actually very, it's not a, not so easy area. So I definitely appreciate what this is trying to do. I, I do believe that we, we need to kind of look at this much more holistically. So I think, I understand that the idea of, well, let's just kind of see how the other ones go, and then, and then, you know, revisit this when it comes. But I just worry that, I just worry about, I worry about if we do that, how, if it closes down some options for us. So, but in general, I do agree with the idea right now, maybe we could revisit this later. But I, at the same time, I also am concerned about trying to solve this, because this is a problem that a lot of people that live in the area have mentioned to me. So, so maybe not this one, but maybe we should come up with some other idea that might solve some of the issues there.
Thank you, Mr. Tanaka. I actually will align myself with all those comments. So, Mr. Carrasco, thank you for this idea. It seems like it may not be moving forward. I do like the idea of kind of envisioning Palo Alto something very different and what our DNA is, as you mentioned. I think that's a nice way of thinking about this. Share a lot of the comments with my colleagues, but won't get into that. The one thing I do want to emphasize is, if you go to page 171, there's an image of what I presume are a lot of the improvements as proposed in the Hexagon report from November. And I think it would do us well, so if you think about Embarcadero, like, everyone knows, as Councilmember Tanaka says, you know, the traffic's terrible, or people are driving too fast. You know, if you ask most people in town what the worst intersection in town is, they're probably going to say, you know, Town and Country and Paly. I think that's maybe the number one we hear about. Somebody's mentioned issues with Castalea. I know there's also issues down towards Edgewood. And I wonder if it doesn't behoove us to do some kind of workup or study session or, you know, forum on Embarcadero in general, right? Call it from El Camino down to 101. Maybe that's a bit large. But touching on some of these ideas, such as the proposed bike lanes at El Camino, the overcrossing for Paly students, although if I recall correctly, Councilmember Tanaka and I, when we were on the planning commission, staff came to us with some reason why that wasn't functional, actually why overcrossing there wasn't functional. Maybe that's changed. Some of the Hexagon improvements here, quote unquote improvements, so that we and the community can kind of look at this issue a little more holistically, absent some of the great separation conversations. And I think it's, it's understood by all of us that whatever we do at Churchill, there are likely effects on Embarcadero and the neighborhoods around there, and that's important to consider. Nonetheless, there are potentially improvements we could make today, you know, absent the great separation conversation for Embarcadero. And so I'm not going to put in the motion, but Mr. City Manager, Mr. Chief Transportation Officer, we should chat sometime about Embarcadero. And I think some of these Hexagon ideas have some promise, and it'd be nice to surface those to the community. If there are no other comments on this third idea, would you please vote on the board? Thank you. And so that passes 7-2-0, that we will not move forward with the rethink Embarcadero circulation concept. So again, thank you to everyone. Just a quick time check, it's 10:00 PM. We have one more big item. We have one more little piece on this rail item, which I see lots of nodding and lights going off, so let's try to keep it short. And then we have one more big item. Does anybody want to make, so just backing off for a sec, does anybody have any ideas or does the city manager want to comment on our last item of the night? And whether we think we're going to get to it?
So this is regarding the report on the auditor, city auditor.
Correct.
The, yeah, recognizing the time, I think it's unlikely, and also the housing work plan ahead of it, unlikely that the council will have a full discussion. I believe we do have some people who might want to speak on the item, so perhaps you might take testimony and lay the item over.
Okay, that sounds reasonable to me. Let's finish off this rail item as quickly as we can, go through the housing work plan, and if there's still folks around who wish to comment on the last item, let's take that testimony, and at the time, we can move to another date.
I don't know.
Does that sound reasonable to everyone?
Yes.
Okay, so when we get to the item, we'll move to a date, certain or uncertain?
I don't know.
I'm guessing the housing item's going to take us an hour and a quarter. Would you rather move those comments up? Okay.
I'd leave the auditors to the next time.
Just move the whole item? Okay. All right, I'm hearing some chatter here about moving it to a date, another date.
Let me tell you why. This is a really important item for a number of reasons that we may go into tonight or not go into if we had a chance to do that. But that, we're talking about, you know, the fourth leg of that stool. We have three in place, and the question is, do we, do we put an auditor back in place again? It's a huge discussion. So I would respectfully ask that we, that we take number four up on another night in the not-too-distant future.
Okay, so there's a motion by Councilmember Niss to move item number four, is it, to a date TBD.
Well, and in fact, I think we were looking at calendars earlier, and I believe the 24th of February might be a possibility. So we could confirm that, but perhaps tentatively.
All right, tentatively for the 24th. Is there a second for that motion? Seconded by Vice Mayor DuBois. Do you want to speak to your first, well, actually, I don't think you speak to these motions. Okay, so we are moving item four out. I want to thank everybody who's been here for a long time. I know. Let's vote on this motion to move item number four.
Oh yeah, that's right. You bring back Ross for that night, too.
Thank you all. Okay, back to the issue at hand. I think I saw a light from Councilmember Cormac first. Just a quick reminder, this is any other direction to staff or the X cap on our rail process.
I think it's actually three, right? Feedback and guidance on what to include in the final recommendation report?
Yes, I was just thinking in terms of, we did three options, and this is the fourth part. Go ahead.
All right. So this is probably the largest project we'll undertake in this century, let alone the last one. And at other times that we've been successful at doing this, we've had an excellent report, right, that is a record of decision-making process. So I'll just whip through a few couple things that I had written down. What's the problem we're trying to solve? What are the methods that we've used to understand the problem and the potential solutions? What are the criteria? Pros and cons, obviously the recommendations themselves, mitigations for known concerns, and then appendices of data and visuals, et cetera. So really, again, a record of our decision-making process. So someone who has not participated, someone who lives on Meadow and doesn't know that we just discussed an option that might include taking their property, has the opportunity to read through and see the work that has been done. So those are my suggestions, and again, thank you to the X cap for taking on the hard work.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Vice Mayor DuBois.
So I think, you know, we've added two scenarios tonight, so we've added cost and probably timing.
I didn't have a question, that's all.
Possibly pushing this out beyond April. So I'd like to ask the X cap to help us by proposing elimination of options. And I think if you could help us get to two options per crossing, that would be highly useful. You know, adding the Italian roundabout, I think we're up to six options for Charleston, six for Meadow. And so I think if you could, I think you guys are supposed to come to us one more time before the final recommendation. If you could come back with like two options, I think council could use that night to debate those options. It's not agendized tonight, but personally, I'm ready to eliminate some of the options. So I'd make the motion that council would request the X cap come back in the next meeting, proposing to eliminate options with a goal of two options per crossing, but, you know...
Tentatively second that. I just have a quick question. Do you all think that is possible?
So obviously, we can make anything happen, but I would say that we have, we have a meeting tomorrow, we have Caltrin coming the week after, the eminent domain determining the week after that. And frankly, our report was supposed to do April 30th, although now I've got to give you the news that it may be pushed, because we've got to wait for whatever AECOM comes back with. In order to make that deadline, we actually would have to start deliberation sooner. So we could go through the added process of trying to eliminate alternatives, to come to you to tell you that we've eliminated alternatives, but just a few weeks after that, theoretically, we would have been making our final decisions. So question of, I guess it might be more helpful to wait until we know how long it's going to take for the AECOM work to be completed? Because if it's going to add four months anyway, then sure, we can do an interim step. But if it doesn't take that long, I know it's like for Mike Price's thing, it may take less work than perhaps Elizabeth's idea, then I guess I don't have a sense yet of the schedule to even be able to say whether we can fit that in, just because your agenda's super heavy, and if we've got to be able to agendize then meetings where we can deliberate just on the removal, and then again on the final.
Sure, okay, so that kind of sounds like a no to me.
It would be complicated. It would just add to your timeline, which I don't think helps.
I guess it's a nice no, as Councilmember Niss is saying. I think the thing is, we do have some desire to begin narrowing options and really getting into the meat and potatoes of this. And so I would, sorry, I'm just...
Three words, Smith, this.
I'm just editorializing here, but like, encourage the X cap to consider deleting ideas sooner rather than later. And, you know, I think, I think some of the things, you know, such as speaking to a property taken's lawyer is interesting, but, you know, on the whole, would we rather see that or would we rather narrow some ideas down?
And again, I'd like to see you guys come back before you just have a set of preferred alternatives, I think, coming back to us with one more round of choices so that we can weigh in, would be useful.
So I guess the question back would be, what about, is, are we at X cap at some point going to receive some kind of financial, these are the boundaries conversation? Because if our thing goes longer, you know, in order for us to be able to eliminate things, it's a lot easier if we're told, well, look, there's, we're definitely not going to have this much money or that much money. I mean, you know, we could keep going, but I guess the question to you guys back is, what's your timeline for getting us those things so that we have a better sense? I mean, we could certainly focus simply on, if money was no object, what do we like?
Certainly, you know, money's, money's not no object.
Right. But one of, for example, we're having a discussion about measurable criteria, and one of our conversations is about, one of the criteria is feasible with funding alternatives. And all of those words are really loaded, and we don't really have a way to apply that criteria, so...
But I think also, you know, that's, that's something council can also debate. Like, I think it was useful tonight when you guys said that some engineers had weighed in on the current estimates, and it's like another data point. So I don't know, I don't know how long it's going to be until, you know, I don't, I don't see us giving you a very clear budget anytime soon. a very clear budget anytime soon.
So, I mean, there's a motion on the floor. I would just comment on the budget question, you know, cost is one of our criteria? And that's kind of, you know...
So on the motion, I think, I thought we were suggesting changing it just to be, to ask the XCAP to eliminate some options, period?
Yeah. Do you have a... I would tentatively second it, but when I heard from the XCAP, didn't seem so possible to do by the next meeting. And I hope they've gotten the message, but is there a second to this?
I think I heard a clear message to us.
Well, perhaps if I might, in the vein of facilitating the process we're in, cost is certainly one of the 11 criteria that exists for each of the options. The... Not to put words in Nadia's mouth, but I think what you heard back was that it would be difficult to eliminate options until the additional analysis on the new idea is complete. That raises some concern, that if the existing alternatives can't be evaluated on their own merits, then that's somewhat problematic. It's a circular, I think, problem that we would have, that we won't be able to make any decision until we can make the complete decision.
So just to clarify, no. What I was saying is, so working with the timelines that we had, April 30th, our report is due. Figure it's going to take us two, maybe three meetings to create the sausage and agree on, this is the words, these are the chapters, these are the final appendices, what have you. That means we've got to have a decision by early April. That's in not very long time, considering the pace at which XCAP goes, and that we have at least two meetings chused up by public speakers, and that we've got additional... We have another traffic consultant meeting, is the third meeting after next week's. So we have a lot of... We don't have a lot of time then to deliberate. And what I'm more concerned about is we're doing double deliberations. We would be deliberating on reducing the alternatives that already exist, and then when the work would come back on the new ones, we would start deliberating again. And so we could come back to an interim point to the council, but I just think you're chewing up more cycles of XCAP, and we're not as experienced as city council at these things, so it takes us a little longer to do those. And I just worry, I think it would be possible, certainly, but I'm just worrying that the amount of meetings it would take to get all that work done, plus I also heard you say, which I'm excited about, that XCAP would have a chance to kind of, as AECOM's working on the new alternatives, actually look at those as well, which also adds to our meeting time. So the question is...
I wasn't suggesting that the XCAP would do that as a whole. I mean, you've had the smaller group that has weighed in on specific issues.
You meant the technical working group.
As a subcommittee or as a task group, that could be more effective than having the entire XCAP debate every topic. What I would suggest, perhaps as a way of getting the work done, is to apply the criteria to the alternatives individually. And in the same way that you've started to address the new ideas, to apply those criteria to the existing alternatives and see if that results in a conclusion that one or more of the existing alternatives aren't as viable as the others.
I think, Larry, would you like to say something?
Former Mayor Larry Klein.
Thank you. I would urge you to stay the course. I think we have, we spent a lot of time developing a work plan and a schedule. Nadia's done a terrific job on that. And I think that that's meaningful. I don't see anything to be gained by rushing something at this point. We're already on a very rushed program. And I think for good reason, and I've made this argument several times to my colleagues, why do we have to do this by April 30th? But I think that Allison's talk about the criteria and what you expect in a report is really very significant. And asking for something prematurely, I think, goes contrary to that. Because you're not going to get, if you want something in two or three weeks, you're not going to get a written report about it. And that will never happen. Once you say why that we want X rather than Y and Z, you're not going to go back and write a heavy report on that. And I don't see what we'd gain as a city by having that a few weeks ahead of the April 30th deadline. What's important, I think, is not so much what you eliminate, it's what we end up recommending and what the council finally decides to adopt as the preferred alternative. I think what you really want to hear is that, rather than which ones are in last place. So in addition to, my comments are in addition to what Nadia has talked about in terms of adding to our workload, and in fact, having us do the same work twice. I would say that what we have now is a logical, doable process, ignoring for the moment any additional time needed for the two alternatives adopted tonight. The XCAP that you've created has been diligently working and has adopted its process. I don't think that you really want to interfere with the process as long as it's staying on target. And I think that'll produce the best work result for our community, so I'd urge you to stay the course.
Okay. So, thank you for that. So I'll withdraw the motion, but again, I wasn't suggesting rushing the process. It was more along the lines of what Ed was saying, that given this criteria, you know, looking at like these seven options for Charleston and Meadow, you know, I think being able to eliminate some of them if you don't think they're viable would be useful. And then I don't know what your plan shows right now, but again, rather than just coming back to council one more time, saying this is the answer, I think, you know, having another session with council before the final report would be useful.
Well, I'm glad you gave me the time to think a little bit more, Tom. Another criteria, another factor here is the, I think, what, six different town meetings that we have scheduled in February and March. And if those are to be meaningful, I think you need to say to the community, we haven't made up our minds yet. And so if we have made up our minds, then it makes it hard to say to the community, we're still talking about them. That doesn't, they don't follow. And what do we have, Ed? Three in February, three in March, or am I underestimating that?
Just to confirm, we've got three town halls scheduled over the next roughly two months, and there are also, in parallel, these more informal staff wrap sessions.
Thank you. Just jumping in here, kind of wanting to, thank you Vice Mayor DuBois for withdrawing the motion. I think there is some desire in council to begin stack-ranking the alternatives where we have some cards on the table already, and we understand we've added some more where we need some more data points to understand them. Here, former Mayor Klein, that, you know, you've got a work plan, let's not mess with it, so I think it's fair to leave that alone. But if the XCAP does see ideas that you think are, you know, recommendable or floating to the top, I think beginning to do some of the work on that is helpful to the council. Next speaker's Councilmember Koo.
I just wanted to ask, is it beneficial for AECOM to return to the XCAP to get feedback as to how to go about working on the ideas that we provided?
So I'm sensitive to what City Manager Chicago was saying. I think maybe having a subset of the team would help. But I do have to say that honestly, whether it's XCAP or just members of the community, the more ideas, the more eyes on these ideas, the better. I mean, the new ideas that we got was because a lot of people started attending meetings and thinking. And so we, there's 13 of us, but we're by no means the chosen ones in terms of we have all the answers. And Palo Alto's a very smart community that always continues to impress me, and the more people who look at these ideas, the better. So we can certainly work with the city staff to try to figure out how, maybe have the technical working group look at some, or if there's a different subset of the XCAP that's specifically interested in doing that, certainly. But I do think that when it comes to doing renderings and animations, the XCAP felt like, you know, we might be able to save ourselves some money when, if you're going to animate things that are just going to be pretty terrible. And so to the extent that we could help before that step in saving some money, that probably has some value. But I don't have, I wouldn't have an official, this is how I think we ought to do it. I would just say that, you know, we should be directed to work as collaborative as we can, whether it's offline or, you know, in a semi-official way, but not necessarily full meetings, because I don't want to slow us down. But I do think it would be valuable, because this is the group that has focused the most time on these issues.
And we appreciate that. And I think in our earlier motion, Councilmember Niss had incorporated that the AECOM and staff help more with the renderings in order to produce these plans so that people... A visual is always much better. Thank you.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Just briefly, you know, on the discussion of scope, you know, from a practical perspective, I think it's going to be really hard to get down to a small number of alternatives at this point. If you just look at the Charleston and Meadow, I don't see how we can eliminate either the viaduct or the hybrid until we know the outcome of the assessment of the Alexis option. So you've got at least three there. So I guess I'm agreeing with the XCAP team, and I'm not sure how productive it is to try to get from five to three right now when there's other stuff to be done.
Thank you. I don't think I see any other lights on this item, so maybe this fourth little section I envisioned doesn't have any motions. Any last comments on this, folks?
If I could add, I think the one thing that might be useful, and I might come back with, I'll have to obviously ask XCAP what they think, is whether we have any more questions on the criteria. Because the criteria that we're using was created in September of 2017, and I will just say that specifically when it comes to a closure, it's, I don't think the criteria when it was created envisioned specifically that alternative. And so there are terms in there, for instance, increasing east-west connectivity. Applying that to a closure is difficult. And so I would say that if the preview of, if and when we come back to you, we may not have less alternatives, but we may ask for points of clarification on some of the criteria that were just either are unclear or were written at a time before we knew that these were the alternatives we would have.
Understood. Thank you. Okay. And with that, we are done with this item number three, Great Separation. Thank you, everyone. Thank you to all the public who has somehow filtered out, and thank you to staff and our XCAP members. We appreciate all your work. So we have one more item for the night.
Mayor Fine.
Councilmember Niss.
Have they left? We've got five.
Great. So somewhat unusual suggestion, because as you all know, housing is one of my favorite topics, but it's going on to 10:30. I think this is going to take more than just a short period of time. Jonathan, I'm looking at you and really feeling very bad about this, because I know you're still here for this item. But I think we could give it far more of our attention and care and feeding if we were to wait until we have another opening. So having said that, looking at the City Manager, looking at the City Manager.
Hello, Ed.
Certainly, at the pleasure of the council, we'll find suitable follow-up date if necessary.
Can you find a soon suitable?
Let's see.
Next week, we have business tax polling results, and then the mid-pen only.
That looks like a light night. Can we fit it in then?
The mid-pen one's not too heavy.
What's mid-pen?
The cable and PET peg fees with mid-pen. The Public Education and Government Access Channel.
The public building away from the...
Okay.
I'm reversing the list. Mayor Fine?
Yes.
So on the 27th, we have an hour-long litigation to begin with, and then we have the polling outreach and the mid-pen. And right now, that's taking us to about 10:15, 10:30 on the 27th. On February 3rd, we have an hour-and-a-half-long closed session coming up, and two action items, which will also take us to about 10:30. On February 10th, we have another closed session and action items taking us till about 10:15. So the earliest probably to come back, we've already rescheduled one item to February 24th, might be March 2nd.
So having said all of that, and looking at the City Manager, is there any way we can move one of those? Because let's do that rather than stay till 11:30 tonight. That would be my suggestion.
Former Mayor Phil Seth is reminding me why he started the meetings at 5:00 PM.
It wasn't out of desire.
All right. So Councilmember Niss, is there a motion to move this to a date to be determined by...
Yes. So I'll make a motion to move this to a date that is as soon as possible, and that we, if necessary, defer one item so that we can take this up somewhat sooner.
Thank you. Is there a second for that?
Sure.
So seconded by Councilmember Phil Seth. We have two speakers on this item. I'm going to apologize if this motion passes, we'll be moving this item, but given it's 10:30, and I think we are all a little wiped from the previous item, I'm also disappointed. Any discussion on this item, on this motion?
Oops. It looks like there's something hanging.
Councilmember Cormac.
Great. That's perfect.
Okay. So let me just see if I understand what's happening. We're suggesting moving this to a date uncertain.
To a date as soon, as it says, a future date as soon as possible.
Okay. And perhaps staff could just advise us if there's any urgency to any of the questions or reprioritization in here? Is there anything that is of concern if this takes a number of weeks before you get
Nothing beyond that was already stipulated in the staff report.
Thank you.
Would you please vote on the motion? That passes unanimously, so we'll move this item to a date as soon as possible. Also, apologies, you all know this is important to me too, and all of us, so that's unfortunate. Thank you Director Lake for hanging around with us. So that ends our meeting for the night. I just want...
Council comments.
It's not on here.
They're not on there.
Just special meeting. So just an adjournment, and the Vice Mayor mentioned to me earlier today that in Palo Alto, we suffered our first...
What?
How do I phrase this? You know, I guess we'd just like to adjourn the meeting in the hopes of safety, given the shooting that occurred in Palo Alto early this morning, and a man passed away. So we don't know all the details, but I just hope we can adjourn this meeting for a safer year for everyone. Thank you.
I know we don't have announcements, but I did get re-elected to the airboard, just so you know.
We said no announcements. Thank you.